Good evening. I am going to call us to order. It's the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five school committee meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mastermore Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media this evening. Thank you so much. And we will be recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is there anybody else in the audience recording? Not seeing any. Okay. So we are going to move over to the next items of the agenda. Items two through seven relate to the budget. So I'm going to pass it over to Katie Roberts.
Terrific. And we'll just take a moment for Ayesha to be able to project the slides here this evening. So just a reminder to anyone from the public--
Recording in progress.
Just a reminder to anyone who might be online this evening. Just a reminder that a budget season is an iterative process. And so over the course of the next several weeks, we will be making proposals to the school committee, taking feedback, refining our proposals, and taking any new information that comes in over the course of budget season and making adjustments again to those proposals. So at each budget meeting, we'll be repeating some of the same introductory information at the start, giving an overview of what budget season entails, some of the data that we use to inform our decision-making, knowing that members of the public might join us at various points along the way. And so just we'll provide kind of an orientation at the start of each meeting so the community is aware where we are currently at in the process. And so we'll begin with the first slide. Thanks, Ayesha. Again, with that--
Do you just want to note that Matt's online?
Yeah, he'll be in here. So just for purposes of the school committee members who are here, Matt Cosman is online. He will be here in five to ten minutes. So he will be here in person when we-- if we vote on anything. But I am joined by my other committee members in person. Tim, Miller Dempsey, Carrie Knee, Michelle Eyre, Ally Anderson, Jen Benham, and myself, Ness Curante. Thank you.
Thanks, Ness. So just to give a brief overview of our budget season. So tonight I'll share the budget process and timeline, talk a little bit about our communication strategy to keep the community informed. We'll review some aspects of our local budget context that will range from priorities, assumptions, and drivers to some of the initiatives and curriculum and instruction that might inform our decision-making. We'll look at academic data, financial and enrollment data. And then we will dig into our budget proposals. So just a reminder that on Monday evening, we presented our general education, special education, and building-based budgets along with our professional development budget. Tonight, many of the aspects that we will be covering fall under the auspices of our business director, Ayesha Opang. And so we'll review our central office administration, technology, athletics, facilities, and transportation this evening. And just a review of our budget process. So no sooner do our children arrive for the first day of school than we begin the process of planning a budget for the following year. So we do begin our budget planning in October with a review of the current year's budget. So this year, we did review our FY twenty-five budget to ensure that all of our leaders fully understood it and communicated our expectation for the year ahead. Then later in October and November, we met to determine our FY twenty-six budget priorities. And to inform that, we looked at knowing that we would be engaging in a Portrait of a Learner initiative and process and a twenty-five, twenty-eight strategic plan. We made some informed guesses as to some of the priorities that we would be centering in those two documents. Then the department leaders and principals met to identify their FY twenty-six budget needs. This year, we gave the message that we were aspiring to approach level services, knowing that some cuts may be necessary. And finally, we did ask our leaders to propose reductions and/or reallocations in light of the three-and-a-half percent MOU that we have with the Town of Hingham. And we'll share much more about that this evening. So our budget calendar, again, Monday evening, January thirteenth, kicked off our kind of formal budget season. Tonight, we'll present technology, facilities, athletics, and transportation. And then we will revisit all of the presentations from the last Monday and this evening at our January twenty-seventh meeting. And again, at that time, we'll share some iterations on our most current thinking as of that time with any new information that comes in. And just want to share how we plan to keep the community informed throughout budget season. So each meeting, we are grateful to Ally Anderson and our communication director, Heather Cashman, who worked together to prepare a recap summary of the school committee budget meetings with timestamps for anyone looking to review the actual video from the presentations. All presentation slides and associated documents will be posted on the district website budget page. And then we will include in principal newsletters, meeting calendar reminders, and any updates to keep our parents and caregivers informed. Next, we'll just review some of our priorities, assumptions, and drivers. So as I alluded earlier, one of the central documents that will inform our planning for next year is a document that is actually in process. And that is a document we'll call our Portrait of a Learner. It was a collaborative process with a lot of input from the community, and we'll be sharing that out with the community soon. There are kind of two main elements to the Portrait of a Learner document. We first take a look at our core program to ensure that our students have the skills and competencies they will need to inform their future path. And then secondly, we also want to make sure that we have a range of offerings to meet diverse needs, interests, and future paths. The other document that, again, is in process is our next strategic plan. So the document you see here reflects our two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-five strategic plans. We are in the final year of a strategic plan. Many of the themes from the twenty-two, twenty-five strategic plan are perennial goals and perennial areas of focus. That will be through lines into our next strategic plan, and these will inform our budget-making decisions. So the next two slides encompass the budget priorities that were articulated by our team. So as I alluded, one of our budget priorities will be to align all of our resources to the Portrait of a Learner document and our strategic plan. One of the main focuses of our last strategic plan, which will continue into the twenty-five, twenty-eight cycle, will be our multi-tiered system of supports for both academics and social-emotional learning. So we'll work to align our budget so we can continue to strengthen and sustain these tiered systems of supports. Another major area focus for our leadership team is in the area of strengthening our student services and special education departments. So as many know, we did conduct an audit of our special education programs and have written a strategic plan to help us to improve special education. And again, that is a perennial goal that will continue into the next round of strategic planning. One of the most important levers that we have to drive forward improvements in a school district is professional development. And so in our budget planning process, professional development is a high priority so we can ensure a high curriculum, a high-quality curriculum, robust instruction, and implementation of our social, emotional, and behavioral supports. And then finally, in any school district, facilities and operations are something that we do need to maintain. And so we seek to provide a safe welcoming and well-maintained facilities. We do seek to provide reliable and high-quality technology. And then finally, we do also want to remain focused on promoting efficient financial and human resources operations to support the smooth functioning of the district. Now, in addition to our budget priorities, I did just want to outline some of the assumptions that we made about our budget. So you will be hearing a lot throughout our budget season about the memorandum of understanding, also known as the MOU, that the school committee, select board, and advisory committee, along with the superintendent and town manager, in two thousand and twenty-three, signed a four-year commitment that would cap our increases year over year at three-and-a-half percent. So that is for the years FY twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. When the MOU was signed, the group at that time articulated the understanding that the increased costs in personnel, special education, and energy costs would result in deficits in the twenty-five to twenty-eight school year and charged the town manager or the town administrator and school superintendent with working within the MOU. So we are committed to that, and our presentation this evening does work within the confines of the three-and-a-half percent MOU. And so given that context, we did make some budget assumptions that include zero-based budgeting for any of our discretionary lines. These lines would include things like supplies, texts, apps, and other discretionary lines. So we built those up from zero. Unfortunately, as you'll see in a future slide, that piece of the pie is actually fairly small, those discretionary lines, but again, we did make an earnest effort to build those up from zero. We then took a look at any efficiencies, reallocations that we could take advantage of, and we will share some of the efficiencies and reallocations this evening. And we did look deeply at enrollment. And so anywhere that we could take a look at class sizes, and that might inform some of our decision-making, and look at overall enrollment. That was a major part of our budget planning. We also looked deeply at offsets and revenues. And tonight in particular, you'll hear some of our proposal around fees. And we will also re-discuss some of the tuition options that we have. So in terms of our budget drivers, as I mentioned, much of our budget relates to contractual obligations. And so these contractual obligations include the obligations that we have with our bargaining units. And FY twenty-six salary increases will range from three to seven percent in most cases when factoring in cost of living, steps, and lanes. We also had increases in contractual obligations with regard to tuition reimbursements, stipends, and longevity. And we also have increased substitute costs to cover extended leaves. Finally, as any family is also experiencing, we as a district are experiencing increased fuel and utility costs. So one example would be the fact that electricity is anticipated to go up six percent next year. It's important to note that two of our buildings are heated by electricity, so that will have an impact for us. While water is only increasing by three percent, sewer is increasing by eight percent. So you can see the three-and-a-half percent MOU. Some of these items exceed that three-and-a-half percent. For any district, a key budget driver is special education and student services. And so we continue to have a need for specialized social, emotional, and behavioral supports as an area that we have seen a significant increase, as well as other specialized services. Additionally, we have increases in our out-of-district special education tuitions and services. These rates are set by an outside organization called the Operational Services Division. They annually provide an estimate of rates of inflation for these private special education programs. The increase for FY twenty-six has been set at three-point-six-seven percent. However, programs can additionally apply for program reconstruction, which allow for rates significantly beyond the three-point-six-seven percent. Next up, I'll let Ayesha Opang share some of the financial data that we considered in our decision-making.
So Katie also mentioned as part of her presentation that our budget, the structure of our budget in terms of it being significantly made up of contractual and personnel costs and the discretionary part of our budget increasing, being a very small part of the pie. And it's probably about four percent of the overall budget in terms of those areas that we have discretion over in terms of being able to increase or decrease in terms of those lines, like supplies, textbooks. And textbooks, these are the main things that we have that would be part of the discretionary line. And in the prior years' budget, we made some significant decreases to those lines. And we found that even in terms of computer software, we went through and made many decreases in those areas. And in some cases, it has been difficult this year for our buildings in terms of being able to operate because of those reductions. So you may see throughout the budget that you've had to make small increases in those areas just because kids need crayons and to have an art program, you have to have paint. In terms of what drives, a big revenue, a big part of where we get our revenue from in terms of being able to provide the services that we provide is from the town. And Mrs. Roberts spoke about, Superintendent Roberts spoke about the MOU in the town. And as part of that, we know that our revenue or the amount of money that we have for spending this year is fixed at seventy million, three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand. And in terms of that, the town's forecasts show that we will be able to receive that amount, and we just have to verify our expenditure in terms of meeting those revenue amounts. From the presentation that I made on Monday, there have been small reallocations within lines that I've made in terms of an update from Monday to today for this slide here. I just want to, but then overall, the total numbers have remained the same. And the buckets that have changed have been very small changes. They're not noteworthy in terms of going through them, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case anybody was going for a line-by-line comparison between the schedules here. But overall, in terms of the total budget--
We all kind of look that way.
In terms of the total budget, it has remained the same. And our offsets and reductions have remained the same, as well as the town's contribution. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in terms of this slide here. In terms of the revolving and grants, that remains the same. I guess I probably should say something about this slide, a little bit more than that for those people who are just jumping in. Basically, in terms of this overall budget here, on Monday, we kind of, we went through the teaching and professional development and special education costs of this budget. And today, we'll focus mostly on transportation, facilities, technology, central office administration, and the school committee costs. This grants and revolving funds slide here just kind of focuses on all the grants that we have access to. From a special ed perspective, we have the IDA grant, which is a federal grant that we receive. We also have Suket Breaker, which is a state grant. And as part of our preschool program, we have tuition revolving account where we use the funds from that revolving account to offset some of the expenses in special education. From a regular education perspective, some of the offsets that we have for the fees that we collect from athletics, the middle school and high school revolving accounts, the building rentals, those fees that we generate also help to offset the cost of our budget. In terms of drivers there, the facilities also gets credited a little bit from that revolving account. We have a cable grant where we are able to offset some of our expenditure from that grant that we receive from the town. The medical grant that we receive, part of the expenses from that grant goes towards the teaching and learning lines. And our full-day kindergarten is also another line where we, a major offset for us in terms of our budget. And I think I spoke about the high school activity fund fee that we instituted this year. As part of this presentation, we will focus a lot on fees in terms of those fees and what our plan is for next year in terms of those fees as well. So hold on to your chairs for that part of the presentation. This budget and revolving funds slide here, it basically shows a rollover of the expenditures within the different revolving funds. Gives you a beginning balance and how we plan to, the receipts we expect to receive this year and the expenditures that we will anticipate based on the budgets from last year, as well as the upcoming twenty-six budgets. For the Kids in Action and School Lunch programs, those two programs, the offsets and revenue here are not directly, do not directly feed into our budget lines. Those really show some of the expenditure to run those programs. And part of those expenditures also go towards, goes towards our budget, as offsets to our budget as well. So for example, in terms of the Kids in Action revolving account, we, so to speak, charge like a rental fee, so to speak, to them. So there's part of, from the revolving, from the grants and revolving account here, you'd see we have a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar offset from Kids in Action. Those funds go towards any maintenance that goes into the building or any utilities that go towards providing that program. So it's really just a rental fee, basically, that we charge in the program. And for the food service, mostly in terms of maintenance, the food service program is highly supported by our maintenance department in terms of any repairs that happen, as well as custodial staff in terms of cleaning the kitchens and cleaning the custodial rooms as well, too. Just to bring that to your attention. Kind of jumped the line. And then now we'll just go through the individual presentations that we have in the different areas.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ayesha. So given that we have roughly one-point-seven million of reductions to make, we had to look deeply in every department, including central office. So in our research around central office, we did look at comparable districts. We did look at state data. And central office administration and staffing is lean relative to comparable districts. And additionally, key operations like accounting, payroll, benefits, HR, other compliance positions are essential to maintain the smooth functioning of the district. So there's only so deep you can go. We must have staff to maintain all of those functions. Similarly, we do have an obligation to our community to maintain a website. A social media platform today is considered a necessity for a school district. Coordination of crisis communications, these are all essential to keep our families and the broader community informed of district news. And again, this just shares some of the data that we looked at. And as you can see, our leadership is very lean relative, certainly to the state average. I will share later in the presentation. Our tech department is similarly very lean relative to both our benchmark districts and to the state average.
In terms of central office, what I did in this slide is I presented both central office and the school committee, just because I don't think we've had another opportunity to present school committee besides as part of this slide. So I wanted to just put the two together. In terms of administrators and admin assistants, here, there's a kind of a reclassification between buckets here in terms of just making sure that we have true. So we don't have a decrease from twenty-five to twenty-six. It's just kind of a reclass between those two lines. And in terms of computer service agreements, those would be in terms of our units, accounting, application, and other software that we use to keep operations running within the administrative department. And in terms of supplies, a lot of the supplies that we use for administrative purposes are really, a lot of it goes towards district, providing district-wide administration as well. So it's something that we, this line here kind of is a very bare line in terms of us being able to provide the services that we need to provide. The other bucket here is a bigger bucket, and it includes, it includes some of our HR software that we use, as well as conferences and travel. The biggest part of it is really the HR software that we use and the payroll software that we use comes from that line, as well as things like, as AIP or EAP, right?
Employee Assistance Program.
The Employee Assistance Program, that line is charged through here. Also, we have, any other software that is district-wide comes into that other bucket, particularly where it relates to HR. From a school committee perspective, the slight increase that we're seeing here for legal fees is just kind of our normal legal fees that we have for employee and other relations. The supply line remains fairly constant. And conference and travel, that line here, I haven't reduced it this year, although we haven't had to use it very much of it in the past because the committee has remained the same from year to year. But there have been times when we have new people on the committee, and we need to have training and other workshops to get them up to speed on their task. So I've kept this line still because I'm not sure what's going to happen at the end of this year. Any questions from that so far? Yes?
Can you just remind the public and me who, the administrator and admin assistant line item, like not who specifically that is--
Right, we've got positions.
Yeah, is that spread, is some of those in the schools? Is that literally every, you know, you mentioned payroll and things like that? Are they in that bucket?
Exactly. So then, so basically, in terms of the administrators, it would be the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, business manager, HR coordinator in that line. And in terms of the admin assistants, it would include the finance manager, the payroll staff supervisor, and other staff within the central office. It doesn't include any building-wide--
Yep.
--a school building. This is just mostly focused on the central office. Okay? Is that helpful?
Yep. Can I just point out, too, that this is the group of people, the team of people that are overseeing over seventy-million-dollar budget?
Right.
And if you think of a company that size and how, you know, how many people would be in charge of that versus a school district, this is very lean. So I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you. In terms of the reduction for this, for this department, central office, this one is a little bit, just to kind of bring you back to it, is that what we, as part of this, there are services that even if we reduce the position, that we will still need to be provided. And there's a cost associated with that, because those additional services that we can't cut in terms of maintaining the website and other things like that. So the gross savings for this is sixty-two thousand, but also the cable grant that we get also nets off against that position as well. So then overall, when you look at our broad schedule, the net savings is only thirty-seven thousand from here just because we have a part of this that we will need to spend anyhow. And the cable grant is also another part of it that reduces that line item. Is that clear?
And so just to clarify--
You have a question, sorry?
Yeah, so maybe you're going to clarify. I'm not completely clear on the math there. Or are we moving from a full-time FTE, is it full-time right now to someone that's going to work?
It's a full-time, it's a full-time position.
Was that three out of seven days? I don't get the point four-three. Is that three out of every seven days?
So basically, the point four-three would be the reduction of the, the position itself is only, is now a full-time position.
Yep.
But even if we were to reduce it completely, it would, we still have a certain level of cost that we would need to pay to have those services, some of those services.
So, but the proposal is eliminating the position, but we still, it doesn't get the entire savings.
Exactly, exactly. Yep.
I understand.
And then because we have a grant that goes against it as well, too, it's really just a thirty-seven thousand savings, net on net, right, in terms of that? it's really just a thirty-seven thousand savings, net on net, right, in terms of that?
We went through the mental exercise. If we did reduce the position altogether.
Yep.
Previously, that position was, parts of it were covered by stipends. So the essential function of the website and so on would likely have to be stipended out. So if we did eliminate the position entirely, it wouldn't be zeroing out those expenses because we would need to go back and kind of stipend out some of the essential functions. The other piece is that we do have some money from the cable grant that is, we are generating content for cable and the communications director is a part of that as well. And so, again, we went through the mental exercise of eliminating the position and came to the conclusion, we cannot zero it out. We may be able to reduce it some. We have some other creative solutions out there of role-sharing with other parts of the town that we are still exploring. But the mental exercise that we went through, it is, it's not possible to eliminate the functions of that position.
Thank you, Katie. And of course, as Katie pointed out, this role provides significant, I mean, in terms of our day-to-day, in terms of even when we look at preschool enrollment and full-day kindergarten enrollment, this year, the enrollment has increased substantially. And primarily, as part of that role of advertising and reaching the public, we had significant increase in the number of people who applied for preschool this year. So I think that in terms of, in my mind, that position provides much more value than just being a website. It's also making the community aware of what's happening within the schools. And it does have, partially does have a revenue generation property by advertising and increasing awareness for what we do in our district as well.
I just add a little editorial. For somebody who was here before that position existed, when it was kind of piecemealed out to people, it's so much more effective. And it's taken, from what I've seen, a lot of effort, work off of the teachers and the building administrators as well, because parents know where they can go. They get the, they get the regular newsletters and get information. They know they can rely on those. The website's a huge improvement. I mean, just, yeah, this makes me feel like we're going backwards again too. So I just wanted to add that perspective too. And I think it's, I think it's vital and it's part of our strategic plan with, for communication. And so I think we'd need to think hard about this one.
Yeah, and we just felt a responsibility, again, with the cuts that we're making, just felt a responsibility to make sure that we were turning over every, every rock, every possibility. And so did go through that mental exercise.
Yeah, I know, and I do appreciate that too.
This is Aya, are you going to say something?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So another area that we're going to explore as well are fees. Right now, what I did here was kind of summarize some of the fees that we currently charge students and I'm proposing a couple of new fees here in order to close the loopholes or that deficit that we currently have. For the middle school activity fee and the high school activity fee, I'm suggesting no changes to this fee at this time. The high school fees, this is the first year of implementation. And I think in terms of that fee, we're just trying to make people more aware of it and making sure that we can actually collect it as efficiently as we should be. The full-day kindergarten fee, that fee, I know that we had made a significant reduction in that fee during the override process, but it continues to contribute in a big way towards the budget. At this time, I'm suggesting that we keep it the same. Kids in Action tuition fees, those we increased in December. So I think we're good in that department. The driver's education, I would like to, us to evaluate that one as part of a whole program review rather than just looking at the fee aspect of it. But now, at this point in time, I think, because the revenue that that program generates is not substantial enough to make a big dent into the budget right now. So I think it'd be okay to pause on that one until we actually evaluate the program. The Chromebook repair, where there is no insurance, I think that one we put in place last year, we'll keep it at the same level. There's a parking fee at the high school. I'm proposing here a significant increase in that fee. Apparently, there are fees for a far lot and a close lot. And this is probably one of the few fees that we know we can get a hundred percent collection on because of the demand for those spots. So I'm proposing here one hundred and twenty-five dollars, from twenty dollars to one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the far lots and for the close lots to two twenty-five.
So where are those moving from?
At the high school. That's what you're asking, sorry?
What are they now? I thought you said twenty to one twenty-five, and then I didn't hear what the two twenty-five was moving from.
Right, so it's now eighty to twenty-five.
Does the parking, is that a revolving account?
It is.
Okay. Can we have that updated on the revolving account?
I can.
Line item?
So it's included.
Because it's new and it'd be interesting to see it.
It's included as part, on the grants and revolving. I think as drama, parking, and other things.
Okay.
But I can make it a separate line.
Add it on, just so we know it's one of the newer accounts.
Definitely. And then in terms of athletics, I'm proposing a slight increase in this one. Maintenance and rentals, we're proposing a three percent increase in that line. And we're proposing a new transportation fee as well, which we'll explore as part of the transportation presentation. Any questions? Sorry?
Just to, just for the public, when they know, when you were talking about the maintenance and the rentals, that doesn't include fees for athletic fields?
No.
Because we, yeah, because we have an MOU with-
Exactly.
Just want people to know that that is not included in that bucket.
Yep. So the athletic, that, the maintenance or rentals would be building rentals, the school buildings and gyms of the school. And Matt probably can chime in here. I think also if the concession stand is rented, that would be direct, go directly to us. But the fields itself would go to, would go to the rec department as part of an MOU we signed where they take care of the fields. Beg your pardon, Katie?
No, just missed it.
I think the concession stand is part of the, I think it's on that form with the fees with the rec.
I'm not sure who gets it though.
Yeah, I think, well, I can, I can always go back on that. Let me just make sure. Because that one is one of them. Matt, do you have any information on that you want to share?
Yes, the, the far concession stand is staffed by custodial staff. So it is part of the fees for not in, not for in-school, but for other organizations to rent. We do charge them, yes.
Yeah, that makes sense. Actually, for some reason, I feel like it's on that.
It may be on the form, just keep it all in one place.
And any, any organization that is not part of the town, not part of the youth organizations in town, if it's private, they do get charged for facility use in the fields. So just clarification.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, yep, so that's that.
Just one question kind of for the public. For any of these fees that are charged to students and families, is there a way for students in need to get waivers or some help with that?
Definitely. So for example, in terms of athletics, and as an example, the athletics program under high school activity fee, we have a process where there's a form that can be filled out for people in need, students in need or families in need. And at the athletic level, Ms. Holler, Mrs. Holler is the one who manages that. And at the high school for the high school activity fee, and it is the principal's admin, James, Mrs. Skinner. And then for any of the other fees as well, for example, Kids in Action, there's a voucher program for our preschool and other tuitions. We also have a sliding scale. For full-day kindergarten, we have a sliding scale as well. So accommodations are made in every aspect of our fee, except the parking fee. There'll be no accommodation for that one.
Okay.
All right? If it is that people can drive and park, then there will be no accommodation for that one. Unless, for example, if somebody is handicapped and needs a parking or can't afford or something special, we'll always accommodate in that.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah, perfect, thanks.
Matt, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just one ask maybe for next time, without doing extra work, because I think we have a lot of this. It's hard to keep track in my head of like, what is the current fee, you know? What is the current fee?
Yep.
How, how, how many, like full-day kindergarten, there's five districts or something like that, or six districts. How many, how consistent is it with the other districts?
Yep.
Like full-day kindergarten, we're an outlier.
Right.
We realize it's, you know, we don't have a lot of money. I don't know, so I'm not asking to go do more work. Like if we don't know middle school activity fees, if it's comparable or not, fine, we don't have to have it. But I think putting that all in one place would be useful for us to sort of be able to look at it all together.
Sounds like a great spreadsheet. And also, I'm just thinking, as we're looking at it, I'm sorry, because I know it is probably more work, although maybe you have it already, but what percentage are we collecting of it? Like I'm just thinking, if fifty percent of people aren't paying the high school activity fee, I don't want to drop a fee on-
The ones who are.
Other people who are also, you know what I mean? Like if we could see, because maybe there's a way to get our communication person to get more, more revenue by finding some way to communicate to people, like this fee needs to be paid, this is why we're using it. So just if there's that type of data available.
Right.
Having a consequence for not paying it.
Yes.
Because I think sometimes people don't necessarily even know that they haven't paid it. Like, and there's no way to look up, I don't, to my knowledge, there's no way to look up whether you paid it.
So what happens for the activity fee right now, it's entered in Aspen. I don't know how visible that is to the community, but I can look into that as well. Because for the activity fees, is athletics also in Aspen as well?
It is.
So I don't know if it's visible to people.
That I don't know.
Right, but I know it's in Aspen.
Does it show if it's been paid? I'm sure there's, I think there'd be a-
So, yeah, so maybe it's part of, probably, I don't know if it's something that's visible, but I can look into that as well. But I know that as part of, for example, Mr. Smith at the middle school, the way he tracks the middle school activity fee, and I'm sure the same thing for athletics as well and for high school activities, that we update that information to them fairly regularly. And then they update it into Aspen. And then they're able to communicate to families to say, okay, these people haven't paid. Here's an email that goes out to those families for those people who haven't paid.
That would be great.
So that happens.
Oh, it does, okay, okay.
That happens regularly. So in terms of, so I think that people who don't know-
Okay, because yeah, what I'm saying to Derek at one point, at the start of the year, there's a lot of things that the parents are signing up for. There's PTO fees, there's the activity fees, there's the athletic fees. And I don't think that, I just think it's hard to kind of manage when you've got multiple schools too for multiple kids. It's, you don't know which ones you've paid and which ones you haven't. And there's no way to, like, I always want to pay them in like the PTO, but there's no way for me to, at least I don't know whether I can log in and see.
Yep, okay.
Or which child that you've paid for.
Right.
Yeah, so we look into the, we'll look into the, to whether it's visible on Aspen as one. But then in terms of, I know the principals are sending reminders to people saying, and then in Mr. Smith's principal newsletter every week, he has a reminder to parents in that newsletter where he also says, this is not the PTO fee. This is the middle school activity fee as well. So I know that efforts are being made. We can definitely try to do more. I like your idea, Michelle, of like also probably advertising, having Heather help us advertise it, like just broadly. But I also like the idea of tracking in terms of seeing whether Aspen can make that visible as well. So people can go in and see those as well too. So some good ideas, thank you.
Thank you.
Technology. So maybe you can tell us an update, Joe, of some of the great things that you're doing.
All right, sure. Well, as a guess as a lead-in to next year's budget, we can talk a little bit about some of the things we did with this year's budget. And from a technology standpoint, a lot of that was sort of the continuation of the five-year plan that we have to replace smart boards with the newer style interactive flat panels, the ViewSonic view boards. That's successfully completed at the high school, the middle school, and now Foster Elementary School as well. In fact, a lot of, a lot of time and effort has gone into the Foster Elementary School, which is underway now. And so hopefully, we'll be able to focus our efforts in other areas that may have been otherwise neglected while we're getting Foster up and running. So in addition to the view boards themselves, there were some other behind-the-scenes sorts of things where we audited our software usage, which informed our decisions on that other small slice of the small pie with the discretionary funds where we did cut down some of our subscription services. We're in process of gathering that information again this year. And obviously, we'll adjust accordingly if we find underutilized assets that we're paying for that we really don't need. So yeah, so that's some of the areas that we worked on over the past year. And the technology section really, for this part of the budget, is going to be minimal really because the technology requests are more of a capital concern, we're going to be. If you advance the slide, I think we'll see that we're going to continue, oh hey, there's a new one. See that coming?
I added that slide just as, to let everyone know. Joe is, and his team are like MacGyver. If any of you are old and remember that TV show when people held things together by paper clips and duct tape. So Joe and his team, again, if you look, that little green slice of the pie is nearly half of, you know, some of our comparable districts. So they do a great job.
Oh, that's a negotiation, I'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
And I would love to ask the question, so as you're thinking, as you're talking and thinking about it, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but given we are so lean, I wonder, are there things that we end up missing or we end up having to pay on the back end because we don't-
Yeah, so it's, it's interesting. I would say that the things necessary to get done are getting done. And they're getting done in a reasonable portion of time. We have a tracking software that allows us to see when people put in trouble tickets, how quickly we're responding to them. And by and large, the turnaround time is definitely acceptable. It's pretty fast. I'm very fortunate. Poor Colin runs around with a chicken with his head cut off to all four elementary schools. And, and he's great, you know? No one will speak a bad word against him, and how could you? Because he's, he's everywhere all the time somehow. Yeah, it's unbelievable. So, and obviously Karen at the middle school, who has to, poor Karen. She has to deal with all the, you know, repair issues of the Chromebooks coming back and forth and dealing with the logistics of supplying loaners and things like that. So, I mean, everybody has their own challenges. There are things to be sure that we could do better if we had additional staff, which is really not the time to ask for it. But I think one of the areas that we could probably do better from a focus perspective is interacting with end-users in terms of introducing them to the technology, working with people in the classroom more directly. A lot of districts have integration specialists who perform those sorts of functions. We sort of have Sarah Jacobson sort of stipended on the side to do some of these things, like the ViewSonic training that Katie mentioned. I deserve very little credit for doing that. That's all Sarah. She goes in and she teaches people how to use it and make best use of these flat panels. So yes, if we had somebody, and that's just one. I'm sure there are other areas, but that's probably the most glaring one that I can think of that comes to mind, that the default technology folks just don't have the bandwidth to go out and do that sort of, you know, proactive intervention, I guess, and introduce and proselytize and sort of teach people better ways to make use of the technology. We send out, you know, email blasts and things like that, just tips and tricks and, and, you know, just general introductions to things that we discover. But again, that sort of intensive, hands-on sort of thing is not something that we do especially well at this point in time, I would say. So that, if that's, if that's, if I understood the question correctly, yeah, that's one area that I think we, we could do, we could do a better job of, frankly.
And there's like, there's the cost benefit analysis to figure out. If you've got, if you've got the additional resources, will we save? Because it's going to alleviate, you know, some problems that might happen. So that's just-
Right, yeah, I see what you're saying. So yeah, so proactively, I don't, I don't know that it would result in savings. I think those sorts of things would more result in more efficient or more complete instructional models being engaged in class. But it's not something I think you'll see a financial benefit from necessarily.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, well, sure enough. Yeah, well, sure enough, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then here we just kind of lay out, um, the, the costs that we have in terms of, um, of, of, of the, the department here. And, um, the, the, the huge decreases in the support staff line. In the past, we included, um, the teaching IT staff as part of the budget line. And I kind of reclassified because I think it's more teaching line rather than a, an IT line. So that's why you've seen a huge decrease in there.
And I think also the, the language lab coordinator too had been there and that was cut last year.
Exactly, that was cut last year too. And then, um, the computer agreements would be, um, where we've had significant reductions in that area. Um, we've had a little bit of a buff in terms of increasing costs where we, um, for example, some, some of the software we need to use, whether it be the Google Suite or whatever, may have had a small increase in terms, in terms of costs this year. Um, but we're basically very bare bones of this. And we're looking at, we're continuing to look at the number of people actually using the software and whether we need to hold on to it based on those numbers. Okay? Um, and then the supplies and materials, these are mostly repair, a lot of ink, um, and other repair costs that we have for, for the computers and providing supplies for us to use as well. Yep.
I think I, I didn't catch the whole sentence when you were talking about the support staff, how that went, how that went down.
Right.
Where did, where did it go? So?
So it's not support?
I, I, you reclassed it. So where did it get reclassed to?
Teachers.
Teachers. That's what I missed when you said it.
Oh, that's, sorry, I shouldn't eat my words. Um, and in terms of capital, we have the ViewSonic boards at the elementary school. Um, wireless access point refresh, I think that's going to happen at
So these are going to happen, the, the view boards and the wireless access points, they're both going to happen in Plymouth River. And that's intentionally because it's our smallest school and which, to whatever degree, we can offset sort of the bubble in the fire hose for the laptop refresh, which is a big number this year. Um, we figured we'd couple that large capital expenditure and continue with the, uh, the flatboard, uh, the, the view board installations with the smallest number just so, uh, it doesn't look like we're hitting capital up for, you know, everything all at once. Try and keep, uh, we, we try to keep a fairly consistent number. We, we sort of plan out a, a five-year, um, expectation. So, well, we want to keep in line to a certain degree, uh, year over year, uh, a, a similar amount. So there, there are no real surprises when we get to outweigh.
Thank you.
A quick question, sorry.
All right.
Sorry, Joe, a very quick question. On the, um, the laptop refresh, I just want to clarify, that's for Chromebook student laptops?
No, these are, this is a teacher laptops.
Teacher laptops, okay.
So effectively, um, yeah, so all the teacher desktops, it, it has sort of been a, a policy, policy decision uh, through the technology committee. And, and really it only made sense that
Mm-hmm.
we can't really afford to provide desktops and laptops. It's, it's certainly not efficient. And people have found that the laptops are, are very useful, not just in school, but for the mobility itself, to bring them home, work from home. Um, even though obviously we're not teaching from home anymore, it's still, uh,
Yeah.
It was basically decided that that's the route we'd go. So we'd go with laptops and docking stations, discontinue having dedicated desktops in the classrooms. Um, and so that's, that's what those are for. Because those all came in the early stages of the pandemic.
Thank you.
Another work done. Never want to use again if I could. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and in terms of athletics, we're moving on to athletics. Um, we have some of the great things that are happening in the program. Um, Jim, you can speak to that part of it.
Sure.
And I can.
Sure, good evening. Um, I would just like to thank you and our community for the resources you provide. And if you look at that top bullet, uh, our student athletes are accessing it. And people, um, that work in my world would probably suggest that we commission a stone and, and engrave it with an 85 and place it somewhere on an athletic field. It just, I must have done the math five times just thinking it had to be wrong. Um, but it's, it's just a, a tremendous statement about what we are providing to these student athletes here, here at the high school. And I thank you for that. Uh, roster opportunities, uh, as we talked about earlier today, this, this could be once, a three-sport student athlete would count three times in a roster opportunity. So that's how many actual roster spots for, for last year. Couple of bullet points here in terms of some successes that we've had. It's been fun to work through those. Um, and then just percentages here in terms of one, two, and three-sport student athletes. I think that the overall trend probably across the country is that three-sport student athletes is becoming less common. I feel pretty good about the 22% number, but I feel really good about the, the fact that 62% of our student athletes are multi-sport athletes. That is something that we prioritize and work together as a staff to try to make sure that that's, that that's happening.
Right, and in terms of the, um, the, the fee structure here, um, in terms of, not the fee structure, but the costs that we're looking at here, um, in terms of athletics, and Jim is now taking home an extra $600,000. Um, what this is, is that we're showing the, um, athletic and coach number growth. And the fee really covers a large portion of, of that expense. Um, admin, admin assistance, drivers and field maintenance, that has gotten a small bump. Um, there's some contracted fees, whether it be dues or other things that have to pay for on a year-to-year basis, um, including sometimes even the transportation as well is contracted when our buses are not able to, um, take students to and from their games. Um, supplies that remain constant. The ice rental is one area where we see increases. Um, and police and, uh, police and officers to actually run the games as well. Those fees are determined by the Patriot League, right, Jim? And not the, um, the schools themselves.
Which fees are those?
The Patriot League determines the fees for the officers, for the, um,
Officials.
Officials, not
Oh, no, that's the, the
Officers, officials, sorry.
The MIA makes the recommended
I beg your pardon?
The MIA recommends that, that fee, yes.
Okay, sorry, on the Patriot League, okay? All right, and then we apply a 400, about a $455,000 athletic revolving account. Um, the, the fees to this, um, as an offset to the budget for athletics.
All right, sorry, two questions, uh, two things. One, just, uh, can you change, correct that fiscal year 2026 budget?
Yes, please, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, because it's 806 in '23, then it's 1.2 in '24, then it's 880, then it goes back up. So I'm assuming that's because of the offsets. But how come
Offsets, yeah.
some years we show the gross and some years the net?
So in some, it depends on whether we actually applied offsets or not. There, there may be a year when we, for whatever reason, decided that we wouldn't offset the fees at that point in time because, for example, I mean, there's several reasons why we, and I know that in '24, um, 2024, we're going, we're going, we're going through negotiations as well.
Yep.
So I think we were trying to make sure that we were able to, in, in everywhere we could, we could save as much as we could so that we could cover the costs that we had as part of that negotiating, negotiation. So that's an area where we probably didn't apply the fee, just to try and reserve, keep it in reserve.
But did we apply the fee in '23 and '25? Is that why those are?
So that's the plan is yes, exactly.
No, sorry, but in the previous years, in '23, in fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '25
Five, exactly.
that we're in right now?
Yep.
Okay.
That is a plan here.
All right.
Okay.
It might be helpful to just show what we applied from revolving accounts, just so people can see
I can, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that what's on the, um, on the grants revolving funds? Because it shows that we applied 900. Oh, I'm sorry, that's kindergarten, sorry. Well, it's just, so it's 455. So we, that was, that's where we would find where it was applied?
Yeah.
So last year we applied 455 and this year we're applying 455.
So this, this year we will. Last year we didn't, even though we had budgeted to do so.
Last '24.
That's '24, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is just the, the anticipated?
Exactly.
And we're applying the 455, but we're not, the fee structure is not that we collect 455. We collect less than that.
Exactly.
That we have excess that we were able to, okay, got it.
Definitely, you got it.
That bottom line, net athletics and other extracurricular activities, that's just athletics, right?
It should just be athletics, sorry.
Okay, okay.
I, I pulled out the, other activities and put it with the high school and middle school lines, but I just had, I should have updated that here as well.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
Everybody's okay?
Mm-hmm.
So this year we're proposing an increase in the athletic fee, um, for individual students from 425 to 450. Um, for hockey, where the differential remains at 200, which will now make it 650. The family cap will now be at 1250 for families that are non-hockey families. And for hockey families will be 17, 1775. And the reason for those increases is really to keep pace with the increases in coaches' salaries and other, um, cost increases as part of the athletic budget. For example, in terms of the rental of the ice rinks, those continue to go up year after year. Um, we're, with those increases, I'm projecting about a $10,000 increase overall that can add to the budget just because, um, I do, I, it all depends on how enrollment goes for next year. Um, and it also depends how, um, it really depends on, in terms of whether we have, um, we have 80% of kids, how many families sign on? So for example, if it is that we have, um, more families in one year, it means that we're collecting less because, um, the, the family discount, right? So it all depends on how that would work out where if it were that, for example, in one year, um, and each individual may be 425 per person. But if it is that you have like several kids in a family joining the high school, it reduces the amount that we collect. It's always difficult to kind of gauge what the collections will actually be.
And what's the increase in ice? Do you know what that is, Ophane?
We, we, we scheduled like, we did 5% on that one.
They had not determined it yet, so we forecasted that.
And do you have a full roster for, um, hockey teams? That, yep, all the teams are a full roster. There's no, are we bringing people up from the eighth grade, I guess?
This year we didn't need to do that for, for either team, for either program.
And you've got a freshman, um, a JV and a varsity for hockey, both girls and boys?
Girls is a, a varsity and a JV.
Okay.
And then boys is varsity and then two JV teams that work as JV one, JV two.
Okay.
And no freshmen.
I'm just thinking there's, there might be an opportunity to raise the rates for hockey, um, if the ice is going up. Like I want to make sure that whatever the ice is going up, the hockey families are capturing that. They're, they're, we're, we're charging enough that they capture that increase and it doesn't get absorbed into our operating budget, that we're not taking on any more responsibility, that we are passing on that cost to the hockey families.
So.
Does that make sense?
Right, but I think that in terms of the increases that we're showing here, um, in terms of, um, moving from, moving to 650, I can make sure that the math works into those increases as well, but we don't have the set costs in, in terms of what the ice is going to be.
You can also circle back with them. This was maybe two months ago, the last time we spoke with them.
Exactly.
Yeah, only because I know that the ice time is, is a significant amount. Um, I don't know how everybody else feels on.
No, I'd agree. I also want to just ask about that second to the last bullet point. So it says with this increase, we're able to keep pace with the increases in coaches' salaries as dictated by the contract. Then the next bullet point says the estimated increase. I'm assuming
I'm not hearing you very clearly, Michelle, for some reason, sorry.
That's right. So I'm assuming the bottom bullet point that says the estimated increase is 10,000. That's the estimated increase that we're going, the net increase we're going to collect
Right.
from these additional fees.
Exactly.
So is that a, the bullet point ahead of it, with the increase, we are able to keep pace with the increases in coaches' salaries as dictated by the contract. That 10,000 covers all of the, is, are we covering all the increases or are we covering some of the increases?
So the increases are actually more than the increase?
That's what I'm asking. So I think we need to say that.
Okay.
That, because it, it's not helping us. It's, we're not keeping pace. It's helping offset the increase, but it's, but it's not, it's not covering the whole, okay?
All the increases.
Yeah, I think that's important to point out.
Okay, thank you.
And Jen?
Um, so my question is, or a comment, is when we're talking about increasing the fee, which I'm, I'm okay with, when we have these discussions, I think it would be also helpful to know the percentage of that amount of the total budget from year to year. And also, did we use, did we pull from that revolving account that year? So, for example, if we didn't pull from the revolving account, if we, and we did increase the fees, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that, to have charged families more but to not access those revolving account funds that year. And then that, and that would also impact the percentage of the total amount that we are using. Like are we, I think we, and we kind of talked about this in the subcommittee meeting of what the percentage is of the total athletics that we're using from the offsets. Like what, what is the goal of the committee? How much of it do we want it to be? Do we want it to be 50%? Do we want it to be 45? Want it to be more in relationship to what we're charging?
Mm-huh. I hear you. Okay. Okay, so one of the things that I know that, um, my friend Matt Cosman, Mr. Matt Cosman might be very happy with is that we included, um, this slide here, um, as well, just to show a comparative of where, um, the fee that we're proposing falls. I just wanted to also make the, the committee aware that, um, for most of those, those towns, those are 2024, 25 fees. Um, and there may be, even in terms of, on the listservs for business managers, I know that there've been many emails about people reviewing kindergarten fees, people reviewing preschool fees, people reviewing, um, bus fees, people reviewing, because everybody's going through hard budget times and they're looking to those fees to help, um, fill in that void gap. So even if we're looking, for example, for a one, a one-sport fee, um, um, Mr. Quattramoni was able to pull this data together for us, looking at the Patriot League.
In the Patriot League and the South Shore League.
Exactly. So looking at that data, we're at the bottom for one-sport athlete. Um, but I just want to just kind of point out that this is 24, 25. And we're comparing our 25, 26 fees to the old fees that people have or the fees for this year. And I'm almost certain that a lot of those, those towns will be increasing their fees this year. Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at that too, but for the one-sport families, we're already paying the most of any of the comparable districts by $75. So it's not even like we're, it's not even that close. And I'm just wondering how dedicated to the one-fee for three seasons are we? Because it seems to make a lot of sense for the three-sport families, they're getting a great deal. For the one-sport families, which is 38% of the people, they're not getting a great deal. Uh, and I know we're trying to promote multi-sport, you know, people to be able to do multi-sports with the same fee, but it seems like 40% of the students are not getting a very good deal.
It, it wouldn't quite be the 38%. And you can see on, on the, the far right of, of each table, you've got plus exceptions. Um, on a different page in the document that I, that I created, what, there are so many different ways that people are, are collecting fees. And when we get in to this world and we want to compare, you want to have one nice neat little chart to be able to compare it. What I did with these numbers is took the absolute least expensive way that somebody could participate in, in three sports. Um, some schools are offering one-fee for the year, similar to us, which I do think is a, personally is a, is a driver to the numbers that we're, we're seeing. Um, some schools are charging a per-season fee. And then some schools take and go additionally that they have tiered sports, similar, that would be what you'd say we're doing with hockey.
Right.
Um, where they call football and, and hockey at tier one, and then they're charging 700 for that, whatever it might be. Hanover's a good example of that, especially with their recent, um, issues, financial issues with, with their override. Um, so it, I, I think your point's a good one. I think, um, it isn't quite the 38 though, and it isn't quite apples to apples here. This is just to kind of give you a sense of, of what things are looking like.
Okay. Hi, I'm not following you that it's not the 38.
So some, i- if you looked at, if you look at that number at 450 right now,
Yeah.
there are several, I would say from 12 down, you look at, and you see, see the yeses? They have different fee structures that there could be additions to what the 225. The reason I selected the lowest is that just seemed to be the easiest kicking point to try to
Right.
give, give you a visual that, that you could kind of add some logic to. Um, but, you know, somebody that's participating in one sport, in Coasit, for example, uh, Coasit has a note, in Pembroke, for example, could get themselves up to 450, and if not over, if they were in one of those tiered sports.
Right, so I guess, I guess my, my question is still how dedicated to the three, to the one-fee per year for three sports are we? Because I would vote against that.
Well, it's interesting because I used to feel that way too. But now that I'm looking at this, I'm like, oh, this is interesting. Because even at the three-tiered level, like even three for, one for the price of three, or three for the price of one, we're still in the high end. Because like Pembroke, and who was the other town that I was looking at, sorry? Well, Pembroke, for example. Like Pembroke, you're two seventy-five for one. Pembroke is one that charges the same fee regardless of what you're doing. But look at, like how much cheaper it is to do, to be in Pembroke and play three sports than it is compared, even compared to Hingham.
Right. But I guess the question that, what Jim is bringing to our attention as well is that because it's a tiered system and this analysis looks at the lowest tier, that for example, yes, maybe if it is track, for a track student in Hingham compared to a track student in Pembroke, they may be the lowest, the lowest um, for Pembroke. But for example, for football, we charge our footballers um, the same four fifty. In Pembroke, it may be five hundred for a, a um, a football player. It may be
Right.
seven hundred for ice hockey or something like that. It just, it's tiered and this is just showing the lowest, the lowest
Okay, got it.
cost. You know what I'm saying?
Maybe you could share that document with the other page of the document.
Entire document, so you can see this.
I collected it all and tried to capture it, but in separate tables so that you can see those upcharges.
Right.
And I'm curious of the Patriot League, the ones that we're comparing, because we, we.
That is Patriot and South Shore.
And South Shore. So we provide um, all different kinds of options for sports. I think we, we have the whole, we run the whole gamut as far as options that we provide. Is that correct?
I think there are two that we don't have right now.
Whereas other, other districts might not provide the full.
There's no district up there that provides what we provide.
And that might be the reason why we have eighty-five percent participation, because a student, even if they're playing one, has the ability to take the sport that they want to, they want, they can play the sport that they want to play because we provide all of the options. So my point is our cost, our total cost line of our athletics is likely higher than other districts because we provide um, more options for these kids, which is why we end up having eighty-five percent participation and therefore we can collect more. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense. Yeah, yeah.
And Ayesha, I don't know if you know this, just kind of back of the envelope, but looking at it too, I agree with you, Tim, it does seem a little bit unfair. Someone who plays one sport, it's four fifty. Someone who plays three sports, it's four fifty. But how quickly, if we did um, you know, the fee for each sport separately, how quickly with families who have multiple kids, would you hit that cap though? And would it actually?
Well, we would remove the cap then, right?
You'd have to move it, right?
Yeah.
Because I think otherwise you'd hit.
Because we don't want to be, I, I, yeah. Because the other thing too is that, I mean, I think that's, Mrs. Carenti makes a, a very good point in terms of our program is, I mean, it's one point five million, right? Um, that's a lot in terms of, we don't want to have to absorb more into our budget by reducing the fee itself either, right?
And there's a, there's a balance. So if we end up charging per sport, then we might reduce the amount of participation and therefore we're collecting less. And that means we either have to cut our costs, which I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know where anybody would want to go. I, I like that we provide a, a fulsome schedule and there's a lot of options for kids. But that, we might be forcing that if we end up going to a per-sport fee structure. There's a, there's just a cost benefit analysis that we need to figure out.
I definitely think our participation would go down if we went to a three, three, you had to pay for each season.
Maybe. I, I mean, I still, I don't think high school sports have caught up to town sports. I mean, into town sports, one season, it's, forget club. Like, just playing John Barker in Hingham, if you're a fourth grader, it's four hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And you, you go play an hour, you know, no practices, you get ten. So I, I, I'm not saying we should charge more for the one sport, but I do think we could charge more for other, for two sport, three sport. And I, I mean, I guess I don't have a good handle on like how much more money that actually brings in. Like, if we're talking, you know, you increase to the, I don't know, you just get rid of this completely and just say we're charging four fifty per, for every sport. For exaggeration, I don't think we would do that. How much more money is that even? Like, and you get rid of the fee, is that?
Four fifty each sport?
Yeah, four fifty for every single sport that every, and keep hockey the same. Like, is that an extra?
Without a family cap?
Two hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, if we, if we didn't have the family cap, that would bring in a substantial amount.
If we've got the same participation rate.
If we have the same participation rate.
I mean, it seems like we have enough, we have so many offerings that a lot of the students, a good chunk of the students who are playing sports in high school, it's their, they're trying out that sport. It's not someone who's been playing it since they were ten years old.
I, I completely agree with you.
Right. I think four hundred fifty dollars is a lot of money to ask to try out a sport. I think the, I think the one year, the one sport is too high and probably the three sport is too low, but, I mean.
But they're trying it because their peers are doing it. Their peers are all playing something and they're, they're like, all right, I'm going to do it too.
Well, I guess, let's listen to what Jim was saying as well. Jim's also, Jim started his conversation by saying that in most places, kids are moving towards having one sport as their main sport. Right? So yes, it is that we're, we're, we're charging um, um, four fifty for that main sport. But we're, but in, but that main sport that that one kid has, they're probably in club, club soccer all year round and just wait for the, the, the fall to play that one sport.
No, that's not, that's, I mean, that's not the case with
They're in baseball.
My family or families.
Well, I'm saying that, that, I'm saying the majority of kids that are one sport kids, that may not be your kid, but I'm thinking that a lot of them too are like, if they are one sport kid, they're probably a kid that, that's their sport, so to speak. Or if they're a, if they're a baseball kid, that's what, that's their main sport, right? I don't know, is that?
I mean, if you, if you have a baseball kid, your baseball kid's going to pay whatever for baseball if the family can afford it.
Right.
If you have a kid who is an I-don't-know kid or an, you know, I'm going to try this out kid, four hundred fifty dollars is a lot.
How many I-don't-know kids?
I think I misunderstood your question, but I still think you're, you're making a valid point in that, I think with our crew program and our running programs, that often you will, you will have kids that haven't been doing that all along.
Right.
Though that the, the work we've been doing with the middle school, with the, the middle school track probably is changing that to some extent. But for the most part, I think there's a fair population of kids in those two activities that maybe are just checking it out as, as you would put it. I think the majority of our, of our team sport kids kind of have that one sport that is their thing. They make their thing. And the structure encourages them to be able to just try something else. Because they don't have to go to mom or dad and say,
Right.
hey, can I get another hundred twenty-five so I can go do this?
Right.
And have to go through that conversation of, well, why do you want to do that? You've never done that before. And I think that it, it, it overcomes that barrier by not having that next.
Right. I mean, that's clearly what it's for, it's so that the kid who's into one sport can try two or three sports.
Right.
I'm talking about the kid who wants to try one sport. And four hundred fifty dollars is too much.
But how many kids do we have like that in Hingham, you think?
I mean, I have two of them that live in my house, so.
Yeah, I'd have to go roster, roster to roster and look at that.
Yeah.
That's, that'd be a tough thing to quantify though.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it's, it's such a delicate balance, right? In a perfect world, athletics would be an enterprise fund, right? You'd collect what you spend, you spend what you collect. But with an eighty-five participation rate, you're certainly not, never going to get there. And the one thing that I keep coming back to when I think about athletics, and not a sporty gal myself, um, and only one of my children played sports at Hingham. But it's the one place where they don't have a screen in front of them. Right? Cannot hold a phone while you're running, walking, jumping, doing what.
We do have esports.
Oh, you just, oh yeah, that's true. In addition, in addition to that piece of it. But I just, it is such a big piece of, I think, the physical, social, emotional health of kids that I, I think we want to try to protect as much as we can. But I do hear what you're saying. It is there, it is such a disparity. So it's just, where's, where's the right spot, right?
I mean, it seems like right now, the three-sport a year kids are getting a really fantastic, absolutely wonderful deal, especially taking in what Matt's saying about town sports.
Yeah, for sure.
I don't think the kids who play one sport are getting a deal. And I would, I would like the three-sport kids to pay their way and I would like the one-sport kids to have the opportunity to try something.
But the one-sport kids, um, what would we, what would the rec center be charging them to play basketball to try out? Like, if, if they were outside of high school, they're going to try it somewhere else, if they're younger, what would they be paying in those types of leagues to try it out?
Right. We're not comparing what they'd pay at the rec center to what they pay at Hingham. We're comparing what they pay at Hingham to what they'd save by doing nothing and going home and being on their phones all afternoon.
But if it's just to try it out and the parents are going to pay for them to just try it out by going to the rec center, aren't we saying the same thing here at the high school?
And, and that's, and that's, it's a little bit more intense than just trying out at the rec at high school. These sports, we're, we're paying for, and I'm telling you, five day, I, I, I mean, it's, I'm a first-time high school parent and I'm like, I can't believe, I'm not a sport person. But I'm like, oh my goodness, a commitment and effort and everything else. These kids are practicing and those coaches are there with those kids, five days a week. Sometimes six, sometimes seven days a week.
I'm not arguing the coaches don't deserve it.
No, I'm just saying that compared, you're, you're paying for seven days or six days of practicing, right? On holidays and weekends. If there's, if there's, if there's, um, if there's, if there's voting going on at the high school, they're going to Starland to practice. So we're paying, they're paying, even if you're a one-sport kid, that's what you're paying for. Six days of practice a week.
And I, I think.
Plus transportation to go to those games. Right?
And it's a bargain.
Yeah.
To what you would pay as a parent for one sport for the kids to try it out before they get to that.
I guess, I, I think I agree with, I don't know, I kind of agree with Tim. Or I do agree with Tim that I absolutely believe the three-sport athletes.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
I'm not convinced that four fifty for the one sport is, is the problem.
Yes.
I think the four fifty for the three sport is the issue. And we should probably be charging a thousand dollars. And I think most three-sport athletes would pay it.
Okay, so let's do that.
I'd like, I guess I would like to understand what the number, like, again, if, I would like to understand what the number is. If, if you just lifted a cap,
Yep.
you know, I'm not saying we should do that, but I can't do the mental math in my head.
Are you saying, and so, so Jim mentioned that there are about sixteen hundred, hundred rostered spots.
Yes.
If we multiply that by four fifty,
Yep.
it's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Assuming that, you know, we would have similar participation.
I think if we, I think if we did. Two current high schoolers who do track, which is three seasons, like for us, that goes from nine hundred to twenty-four hundred. Probably one of them is taking a season off.
Well, and, and to that point, I think if we did do this system, I think from what Jim has explained, a lot of towns do the tiered. And I think we would have to do that. Have the different costs for different tiered for um, hockey. I mean, just, just the equipment alone, I'm thinking. The difference between football and cross-country or um, hockey and soccer. I mean, I just think there's a big difference there for the equipment at least.
I'm not necessarily advocate, advocating for those. I think you should be looking.
I agree.
Looking at it and, I mean, it's got to be a consideration, I think. I mean, we're.
I think it's fair that I take that back and let me do a little bit more work on it in terms of just laying out those options that you've suggested.
It doesn't need to be my option. I was kind of just saying, like, in the, the, you know, if you went all the way to charging, you know, that, like,
Right.
how much actual money, if everybody stayed in, which they wouldn't,
Right.
does that actually get you? You know, does that save the entire budget? I don't think so, but like, literally seven hundred and twenty.
Seven hundred and twenty thousand, right? Seven hundred and twenty thousand.
But that's assuming every kid is going to do the same sport they're currently doing.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I would imagine there are some kids that would drop off. That they are doing the three sports because it's one fee. I don't know whether that would continue if they've got to pay a fee for each sport.
Yeah, I don't think, I think it would impact cross-country and, or track, winter track and spring track. I think those are the teams that you would see the impact in.
Those will be the teams that, that will suffer. Yep.
And anytime we're talking about students too, I just always want to draw us back in the same way we draw back to academic data, draw us back to our YRBS data, sense of belonging, um, you know, your point about um, screen time. And also, you know, quite frankly, um, high school students as part of our portrait of a learner, portrait of a graduate, college applications, you know, activities and co-curriculars at the high school level aren't optional. It is, you know, part of that college application process. So I absolutely am supportive of investigating the fees deeper. But again, just do want to tie us back to, the same way when we're making an academic decision, just make sure we're tying ourselves back to the YRBS data and social, emotional.
I just want to, everything you said is just as true for the one-sport kids as there are for the three-sport kids.
Yeah, I guess one other question, I don't know if you have access to this, but in addition to the financial part of it, in these towns that charge significantly more, Hanover, Duxbury, do you have access to their participation, participation rates as well? Because that, that eighty-five percent participation rate, the idea of messing with the fees and, and screwing that up, that makes me nervous, honestly. Yeah.
So I'll try to think about how I can delicately um, explain this to you. Some people in my world don't exactly understand how to calculate these percentages. I don't, I don't think it's terribly difficult, so I'm not trying to put some sort of genius badge on my, on my chest here. It, it isn't. I don't understand the issue. So I could collect some of that data, but I certainly wouldn't be able to create something as comprehensive as that because the numbers, they're, they're, they're not doing it right.
Okay.
It's a hard conversation to have with a period.
Yeah, 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 no, I get it. Say no more.
To Katie's point, I think the two sports that probably would be most impacted by having a fee for each season would be crew and track because those are the two that are year-round. And do you offer three seasons for the students or at least two for crew and, you know, winter training season? And that, those are both the ones that have the highest participation of kids who are just trying it or just want to go out and throw and, you know, be with their friends and do something they've never done before or just run for cross-country, even if, you know, they're just trying to get, to be able to do a five K or whatever it is. So I think those would be the two sports most impacted and probably the group of kids that.
But not crew, because crew already pays.
It is.
Yeah. But it is a three, you know.
It won't be, we don't collect for crew at all.
Yeah, we don't, so crew pays for their entire.
That is an enterprise.
If a family has paid for a fall crew, would they be less inclined to pay for a second season of winter track if they've already outlaid?
Seven, six hundred, seven?
Right, whatever the extra money is.
Especially if you're doing crew, they're doing three seasons anyway, right? Because they do the winter.
Two of which we sponsor, one of which is, is unofficial.
Okay. So that fee that crew collects is for the entire year if the student wants to do it the entire year?
Per season.
Person, okay, got it. Per season, got it.
So if, so a one-sport, a one, a one, a one-term crew person pays how much?
I, I believe their fee, I'm not, I don't have that handy right now, but I believe it's somewhere around eight hundred dollars.
And the two seasons, sixteen hundred?
Correct.
Do we know what the drop-off is? That would be decent data point to under, you know, like, are we losing a ton of kids?
Anecdotally, what, I think what is happening with crew, whether it's the interest in the activity or whether it's financial, is the crew kids are becoming crew kids. And it's, it's not common that you see the crew kids leave those three seasons. Much, much like the cross-country runner will follow winter and indoor track.
But so, I mean, I guess that, that's an interesting use case. I mean, that, we're saying crew is paying sixteen hundred, most kids, that's a sport that maybe many of them didn't try beforehand. And then they're staying with it and paying multiple times.
So those are data.
I'm just saying, it's one data point, doesn't prove that, you know, you wouldn't lose.
Data point to add in.
There's pretty significant attrition though, from freshman crew. Yes.
Enormous. And it, I don't, we, we would certainly have to look into statistics, but.
That may be because it's incredibly hard. Also expensive.
I wish we had a later year this season. It would have been helpful, yeah. Make sure he's here the next meeting too.
Okay.
All right.
So it sounds like we have some additional work to do, additional data together and.
Constantly peppering you, we're not picking on you.
No, I know.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is, I appreciate it.
And just want to say again, we appreciate that eighty-five percent number is fantastic. And Mary's point, um, is a, a sign that our students are, you know, engaged, belonging, um, have an adult that they are connecting with in that way. So that's all.
Definitely don't want to mess with the percentage.
Right. And I will add that I'm, I'm sure Silver Lake is accurately getting their percentage correctly.
I would, I would agree.
I, I was going now, so it's a really important question, how'd you do against Silver Lake this year?
We're, we're.
Who else, who what?
We're plus four right now, I think it is. So, we're doing okay.
Sorry, Jaclyn has a question.
Oh, she does, okay.
Well, does there have a period in my grade, like the freshman years where they're just trying all things?
Right, with the freshman sports.
And then once they specialize, it's like jacks up.
Interesting idea.
That's an.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
And Jim Ness didn't ask, Mr. Surratt, he didn't ask her normal question. So, um, in terms of if we had to cut the, any, any of the athletic sports. Um, I think you had an answer for that already in terms of when Mrs. Surratt would ask that question.
I think, one of the things that we've been looking into where, I, I think I know where you're going with it. One of the things we, we did, and this is the second year, I believe, is a cooperative team in gymnastics with Hull. Our gymnastics number, we're, we're shrinking. And so you partner with another school and then you share some of the expense. Uh, I think we'll be exploring that for rugby this spring with Norwell. And then, uh, what I think will be a fairly sizable, um, share, uh, with Cohasset with swimming next winter. So those will be some nice savings and then strengthen those teams.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Facilities. So in, um, in terms of the highlights, um, Matt, I guess maybe I could give you the opportunity as well to kind of go through the highlights of, of your year.
Sure.
Yep?
We have a team of five now.
Foster, foster, foster.
Foster. Well, not anymore.
Exactly.
The old foster.
Yes.
Um, we've really had to focus on preventative maintenance. Prevent, preventive maintenance is the things that silently get taken care of. The sound of the HVAC that you hear has to have filters. Has to be lubricated, it has to be checked, it has to have all these things. Our teams are focused on that, um, now that we have a full team. Uh, two of them are very dedicated to it, that's Sean O'Hare and Pete LaFavre. They're experts at their field and they are going through changing belts, changing filters, cutting down univents and really making things, make sure they work. It's all preventative. Preventative prevents the huge costs that we have from our partners, which are contractors that come in and fix things when they totally fail. So they're saving us a lot of money. We have capital projects, some of them that we do, but we partner with people and do them ourselves as well. So it's important, they're smaller projects. Uh, we changed a RISE program classroom at the high school. Our team did most of the carpentry work and then we had electrical and plumbing contracted out. And we have many, many, many small projects going on. If you're at the South Village, you look at the South School, there's a new enclosure for the trash removal. That was Pete LaFavre. He built that himself, he's very skilled with carpentry. If you look at the high school with the thinking classrooms, that was entirely our crew. So they are really, uh, involved with reducing costs of, um, sending out contractors to come into our schools. Those thinking classrooms, just an example, probably would have cost about sixty thousand dollars to have that done. We did it internally and it costs their salaries. So it's very important to keep that work going on. We also facilitate and organize and manage and coordinate all of the contractors that we have in our critical partners in our district. And we've kind of bumped up. We went from a four person management team to a three, so we all split up a lot of the work. And we do a lot of things, especially for kind of the silent in the background, like the old foster. We kept that furnace running, I'm very proud of it, although thank God I never have to see it again. Amen. We kept that furnace running, it broke down six or seven times in the last three months alone. And our internal team kept it going every single day. So, uh, those are those people that you just see every once in a while, they always have a smile on their face, they're always doing work. That's our team, we snowplow too. We have a storm coming up, we're getting ready for it right now. So those are the things that we do in the maintenance department.
So has the, has we shut down the foster boiler or is it still going?
No, we, um.
You feel like there should be like a moment of silence?
We decommissioned the foster boiler, uh, this past week. We turned it over to the contractors. It is now their building, that's why they are clearing it out very quickly. Unsightly as it is, it's necessary, um, and they're moving along very quickly, we're actually ahead of schedule. So that was my maintenance team, uh, going in there and decommissioning ahead of schedule. So we really wanted to make sure that we were, um, turning that building over as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
That's why they're moving.
Uh, some of the line items you see here are very typical. The numbers, when you look at the totals, um, seem large, but they're actually not. If you compare them to, um, other districts that have very large, um, budgets for this. We are well within the range, um, of APPA, the Association of Physical Plan Administrators, says, um, many facilities should run around one or two percent, we're below that. So we're pretty excited about that. Our partners are, um, we're reevaluating some of them. As an example, our elevator partner, we've decided to go with a new one, uh, and they're doing an amazing job. And they're saving us money, time to time again. So we're reevaluating all of our steps along the way. So these costs should relatively go down. You might see increases over the year, but they will be slightly lower historically over time.
And then in terms of the revolving, we're applying Kids in Action, Drives Ed and Building Revolving to the maintenance budget. And in terms of reductions, Matt spoke about them, about the team moving from a three person administration team to a two person administr- from, from four to three, sorry.
From four to three, yeah.
Um, three person administration team, so that's the reduction that we're, um, seeing in that department as well. Um, in terms of fees, one of the things that we'll ask for the committee to do this evening, if you're able to please, is to approve a three percent across the board increase in the, the fees for the maintenance. That will help us stay in line with the costs, um, of running those buildings as well. And in terms of the foster building, instead of using elementary rates, we'll probably use middle school rates for the foster building. Um, in terms of the new space, the, the basketball gym is much bigger, there's a lot more seating and space for people to watch the games and, and it's nothing like the old, like our East Elementary School where it's very tight in terms of space. There's a lot of space in terms of the basketball, that the committee made sure that it was, um, developed and, and made. And, and all the, the problems with East that we saw, they corrected it with Foster.
It is actually a, a true size high school.
Basketball.
Level basketball court. Today we had training around the scoreboarding, the shot clocks, which are, um, based on high school level. You can turn them on, turn them off. Bleachers, which can seat quite a few. Plus you have expanded sides at the ends, so it's a, it's a very good space. And you can couple it with the cafeteria, which acts like an auditorium. So it's definitely a higher level or tier one space that, uh, we're looking at.
Can we charge high school rates?
We, we, we are asking to charge the same rates as the middle school and high school, yeah.
Oh, middle school and high school is the same?
Yeah.
Uh, I know it's, uh, uh, other places in here, how much, uh, electricity and utilities are going up. We live in a town where we own the water company and own the electric company. Is that, do we, have we looked at any opportunities for like either pre-buying our energy or capping the rate? You know, we have an MOU where we're only allowed to raise our rates by a certain amount. Where's the MOU with the electric company? I'm just trying to think if those are, if that's anything that we've thought about, I know that's.
Last year there was some discussion, I don't know if you remember, Mrs. Surratt, on the, the HMLP, whether we could save on some of the, the, the increases. But I think that, um, I don't think that discussion still exists.
No, I think they, they had part of that discussion, but I think it was because of the project that they're working on.
Right.
It wasn't, um, feasible to do.
It wasn't feasible to do. And, um, so I don't think it's an option for us. It would be nice.
I mean, could we pre-buy our electricity at a discounted rate or something like that?
So what we, what we do, do with the, the, I mean, I'm sure everybody in town gets that as well, but, um.
Pay our monthly bills.
Yes, you got your mon-, you pay ahead, when you pay early.
Forty bucks a month.
Yes, you get a little bit of a discount.
Much more for the school.
Yes. So we do do that, we get, we get the invoices ahead of time just to make sure that we can meet that discounted rate. And we do that every single month, right?
And I'll just add, this adds extra impetus for our roofs project, if we could make those roofs solar ready. That will be huge, given the, um, dramatically increasing cost of, um, fuels.
Yeah, one example is, is the old foster was oil and electricity. The new foster is all electricity. It sounds wonderful, but the rates of electricity have gone up, um, increasing more than any other rates. So it's important to kind of think about how can we reduce those rates in the future with PV.
Yep.
Is there a possibility if there was excess funds in the foster, um, to put this solar panel?
We're looking at that.
We are looking at it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then in terms of the capital, um, we know the major capital replacements that we've discussed time and time again. We're now in the process of creating those warrants and working with John Coughlin to have those warrants prepared for the warrant book. Um, next week it'll be, we'll have the first draft given to the town, um, prepared with the town and then we will bring them to you for voting. One of the things there, I, we include in your packet a, a list of the five year, um, plan in terms of the facilities and capital requests. Since, um, Matt has been here, he's reviewed a lot of those, that, that plan and some of the things, he's added a few things that have gone wrong while he's been here in terms of, for example, it's not included on the major replacements, but when you look at that detailed list, there's also, um, the, the, the air handler units at the high school. The costs for replacement of that, these are really, really high. And it may require a, a warrant to replace those over time because of the, the expense of those. But we want to just bring to your attention at least those major repairs that we've discussed before and will be on the warrant booklet for town meeting for this year. Anything you want to add, Matt?
No, I, I, when you do see the more detailed capital layout, it's very important listening to our, um, architectural partners and engineers. If you put on a new roof and then you go ahead and put on HVAC down the road, you tend to not damage the roof, but compromise some of the roof. So you're better off doing it in phases. Put a roof on, put RTUs on this section, then put a roof on, RTUs roof. So I've kind of laid it out over the next five or six years to try to think about how we can do both at the same time. As an example, the air handling units in RTUs at South were placed in nineteen ninety-nine and all of them have failed, so we have to replace them. The high school roof has failed, but the RTUs are about to fail and they were placed in nineteen ninety-nine. The high school is much larger, so the cost is going to be exorbitant. It's important to think about putting both the roof and the RTUs in the same place and effectively placing them at the same time so we don't exacerbate the problems down the road.
The cost of doing that, oh, tremendous.
Of the RTUs.
Yeah.
And the MSBA process, if we were to try to do that.
Right.
That ends in March, if I remember correctly.
Yep, that's right.
Every other year.
Yes.
So we wouldn't be through our town meeting before we have to apply.
So we can still apply and then it's just, it's just a SOI, the statement of interest that we put in.
Okay.
And then based on whether we, um, get accepted or not, there'll be another stage for that as well.
Okay.
That portal just opened today.
Yeah.
Yes.
Science sealed and.
Right, ready to, yeah.
Due in April, so it's, it's a very quick window.
March.
March.
March sixteenth, I think. Um, so the, and we have the data, which is really important. So our master plan is finally being complete, we have all the information, we have the knowledge internally as well. So that SOI is going to be very well written. It's just making sure that they understand the full problems of all the schools and districts.
And to remind everybody, there's no place to put the high school students if that roof fails.
No, and it's actively failing. We just repaired a roof in, um, the gymnasium that was, shut down a couple of games.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. Yeah, I don't have to pull it where that, that we had, yeah, shut down a couple of games.
Yeah. It's not a little leak, I mean, when it leaks there, the leaks that come through the insulation are significant. The leaks that we don't see, which I, we had a committee go through, are the ones that eventually will be the bigger problem. Cause they sit, they destroy the insulation and then all of a sudden you have a problem somewhere that is unfixable. So it's important to keep on top.
Can I, can I add to that just, because there are a few committee members who weren't, I think there was only half of us that were here on that tour. When we went to that room where the leak was over the technology.
Fibroactive, uh, connection to the school. So if Joe was here, he would probably be like, yes! Uh, and it was a fluke that we found it. Something was glitchy, we went into a room in the library and there was water pouring on top of the, the IDF room. So the entire rack, fiber optic connective connection was being soaked. So we caught it right away and corrected the problem. Uh, but there's probably leaks like that all over the building. If you go on the second floor, most of the tile is stained. Those are those small leaks that drip through and stop, they don't go through the floor. The disruption is pretty, pretty big.
I'm really glad you pointed that out, um, Matt, about that, it's not if the roof fails, it, it is failing.
Is failed.
It is failing.
Yeah, we, I, I quantified the seam, the seams are all failed.
Uh-huh.
One hundred percent of them.
And, and the disruption as well, because I think if, nothing else, if we can please take away from what happened with Foster School, it was the exact same thing, we kept saying, well, if the boiler fails, it was failing repeatedly, it just, we were able to repair it. But, you know, and then the disruption to the learning, while the old foster was still there, while this new foster was being, you know, it was really, yeah. So we have to be, um, there, it's a much better way to say.
Uh, some of the other, um, capital outlays, there's some hot water heaters, an amazing life on these things, nineteen ninety-four. Anybody who knows hot water heaters, they're typically ten years, that is unbelievable. And it goes to preventive maintenance. The univentilators would need a little help, they were two thousand and twelve, they're starting to really get tired. We repaired four of them this year, very costly. It's all electric, um, so it's, it's something to look at. Uh, the big thing is the replacement of the, um, RTUs basically. Uh, we need, um, the designers to develop the plans and specifications. And we are estimating the cost to be about four, uh, five hundred thousand, five, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of those. The cafeteria has failed, we're replacing that, we found the money. Ayesha was very creative with that, thank you, Ayesha. Now, the library has failed as well, that's a probably critical one because it gets pretty damp in there. The other one is imminent. So our, our vendors have said everything's failed but the condenser and that's on its way out because the other one's on its way out too. Back net, I'm going to explain that, that's the communication between a sensor, which is basically a thermostat in the furnace. And they're not talking to each other in many of our schools. So that's something that we need to really kind of pick up on. Building one thirty-two, it's where, um, transportation is, food services, ourselves, administration. It is in desperate, it, it needs to be repaired externally, only the trim and some of the roof. It's exposed, it's original paint from nineteen forty-two, amazing, it's still there. The wood underneath is actually, in most places, ninety percent of it's still good. It's like oak trim, never heard of. But we would like to have that, uh, painted and restored to make sure that we get another hundred years out of that building. That slate roof is never going away. Maybe some patches here and there, but it is an unbelievable roof and it's a, it's a great place for us to be. We have an older vehicle that went, it's one of our Sanders and Plows, uh, that's something that we're looking for. There's a lot of different options, I can explain that in greater detail, one of them's a three for two. We have a very old tractor, two thousand and four, it's inoperable. That's a hard quote of sixty-eight thousand, that will be able to be shared with other departments as well. Seal coating, safety painting and resurfacing primarily South School. There's a road behind the fire station that we would have to share costs with. It is a huge problem for a parent drop off for generally just students moving in and out of that building. Seal coating, safety painting would be primarily the high school far lot. Uh, we painted it this year, it was an exorbitant amount of money. If we resurfaced it, it would last at least ten years. So it would be something that we can invest in. I'm constantly thinking of things that we can reinvest in and make sure that we're thinking about sustainability. I'm constantly thinking of things that we can reinvest in and make sure that we're thinking about sustainability, not just shortcut things. So those are those kind of non-major replacements.
So we included in the packet a more detailed analysis of the five-year plan of capital. The capital meeting will be on the twenty-ninth. Why don't you just present some of the things that we have presented to you so you have an idea of what is, when we go into capital as well? Thanks so much, Matt.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to personally thank you, Matt and Katie and Ayesha for, for doing that temporary fix at South School on that, that one pothole, I think, I know. I'm sure Souths wouldn't mind me speaking on their behalf, I, I think it was, it was a problem and I think I appreciate you doing a temporary fix while you're working on fixing up the resurfacing and the cost sharing.
Yeah, that was a joint effort with DPW, they did, they jumped right in, we were both trying to figure out what we can do for that.
I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
While we're transitioning, Ness, can I just clarify two things just about Foster School? One, and Matt correct me if I'm wrong, but the, one, while Foster is electric, there is also, we, we did install ground source heat pumps. So that is going to be a huge, I'm not, not going to say savings because the electricity rates went up, but at least we're not going in addition to what we thought we were going to need to be spending on electric. So there was that, I just wanted to clarify for folks. And then also, cause Ness you had used the word excess, there are no excess funds from the Foster building, but there are funds that we, there were things we took off of our list, including solar panels, to keep a contingency in case there were cost, cost overruns, so the, there are some funds available that, knock wood, we didn't have cost overruns and we may be able to use those for things like, some of the things that we took off the original building wish list that we had.
I thought we got more money because the costs, the MSBA decided because our costs were exorbitant after COVID and all that, all the costs were increased, they gave us more.
They did give us, they did true up.
Reemblemism, yeah.
Yep. With some of the, yes, some of the costs were higher, yes.
Okay.
But, but things like solar panels, softball fields, I'm trying to think of some of the other things, those things were originally in the budget, but then we took them out because we weren't sure if that excess, extra money was going to come from the state, what the construction costs were going to be. So there is some of that original budgeted money was not used, so we can use that for some of these other things.
Thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Are you still awake, Porrick? Thanks for your patience and for hanging in there till the end. In terms of transportation, we, Porrick and his team have really done an amazing job in terms of safely transporting our kids to and from school. For our special ed, special education kids, eighty percent of our, 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 our kids are transported by us. Even above eighty percent, I would say. And I think it makes a difference in terms of our overall costs and in terms of the quality of care that our kids get by being transported by our own local transportation department, right? And in terms of Porrick, he works with the PTOs, the Recreation Department and other community partners on field trips. The rec department keeps us going all summer long with field trips that go out of state, within the state to, to the beach and back.
It's huge.
Yeah, all summer long, right? We're providing that service for them. One of the things that we will do this year is that we will, we're looking into procuring three electric buses and we hope to get them in place by October. And we also won an award for ten more electric buses that we're looking into when we can actually implement and have those put in place as well. So currently we successfully have one electric van in our fleet. Maybe you can just talk a little bit about, what's her name?
Oh, that's bad. Yeah, we, next month we will have a one-year. When I came first, I want to be honest with you, I was ready to say, take this thing back. But they took it back, they fixed the cans and it's been, it's been a huge success. Gives no trouble, I mean, it's very reliable, I mean, it's, it's been a great success. But are big buses going to be the same? Let's see.
Yep. And, and in terms of that as well too, we'll be looking with Highland Capital, not Highland, I keep on saying Highland Capital, Highland, to be able to, in terms of implementation of, of, of the infrastructure and everything else as well. So we're moving forward with that as, as well. One of the things that we will be requesting, requesting as part of the warrants will be not only a lease for the electric vans, um, electric buses, but also this year we had one bus as part of our five-year fleet, which was, it ended up being a lemon in terms of the level of, we had to tow it many times in terms of it not working as well. So we returned it back to the, to Daco and they gave us a new bus and they kept the cost of the bus because of Porrick's amazing negotiation skills. They gave us a new bus for the same price of our old buses for this year. And then, but we'll have to go to town meeting to get, to be able to pay it off for the next year of that lease as well. So that'll be something in terms of, we just did a one-year lease for this year, but then for going forward, we'll need to get that one approved by town meeting. And one of the things that we will do, we will ask town meeting for this year is to move the approval of the leases to the school committee rather than having to go to town meeting every time we need to approve a, a lease for seven or five years. I think it's become pretty much part of our regular operations now and it's something that I'm sure you can approve as a school committee. Anything else you want to highlight in your year, Porrick?
No, I mean, I think you've had enough.
Okay, thank you. In terms of our budget, there's nothing alarming here that is happening except that the, in terms of our leases, that went up a little bit because of the leasing of the, of the school buses, the three additional buses. That increase in the lease will be for both the buses and the infrastructure. But I would say that owning all the costs is pretty much in line with what our expectations are, right? One of the things that we're asking for your approval of this evening would be an increase in the, the rates that we charge to our various partners, whether it be the PTO rate, the rec and/or external groups. We're asking for increases in those rates to keep in, to keep abreast of the costs that are also increasing as well. One of the things that we're looking at this year is the implementation of a transportation fee. The law requires that we transport every kid between K to sixth grade who lives at least six miles away from the school. We need to, by law, provide transportation for those kids. For kids from seven to twelve or kids who live within the two-mile radius, we do not have to transport them for free, we can charge a fee. So as part of this recommendation here, we're looking at, presenting to you tonight, the possibility of adding a fee, transportation fee as one of our additional fees that we, we, we ask parents to, to help us with. For private schools, we also transport our private school partners in town as well for those kids. By law, we have to, the same rule applies for them in terms of transporting them to school and back as well.
If we've implemented a transportation fee, would we be able to charge them as well?
Yes, for those kids that are seven to twelfth grade and, yes, we could, yeah. In terms of, we looked at comparative fees for other, from other districts. We have Norwell kind of neighboring districts, we didn't use comparative districts or our similar like just our neighbors to figure out who's charging a fee and who isn't. It looks like most of our neighbors are charging fees right now and we may be one of the few districts that don't cha, that do not charge any fees at this time. This time. And one of the things that we, it looks like, just in terms of doing our research, most of the, most of our towns actually charge, neighboring towns charge a late fee as well. Because I think it's so important to get the data in, in terms of who will be taking the bus and who will be taking, not taking the bus as soon as possible so we can plan the routes on time as well. Depending on how many, I mean, right now we're using twenty-two, twenty-three buses with Foster. Right now, if it is that we find that by implementing the fee, we, we have less kids than, than, than we, we, we transport right now, maybe we, we decided we don't need to have twenty-three buses or we could have twenty-two buses, we could have less. If it is that only, let's say, we need to have only ten buses because people choose not to, not to use the fee but try, choose to drive the kids to school themselves, right? Hopefully that we don't land in that place and people continue to use our buses, but it'll be a good way to see, reassess our costs as well based on who applies for that service. What we are proposing is a two-dollar per day cost charged for the buses. That would be about three hundred and sixty dollars per individual with a family cap of six to twenty-five. Fees will be charged to students in grade seven to twelve and for kids in K to six who live less than two miles from the schools. For students who are on free and reduced lunches, bus transportation would be for free. The school committee will also need to, will need your approval of, to open a revolving account to track those fees or keep those fees into. We just kind of provided here a little bit of an analysis in terms of how much revenue we assume we would collect. In terms of currently, we have, for East School, we have about four hundred and thirteen riders. We don't think any of those riders will be willing to, or would want. Any of the kids who live between one to two miles, we didn't think for East or PRS, any of those neighbors would want to take the bus. In South and Foster, then we thought that there may be a few kids who, we have a hundred and five kids right now. Hundred and five, right, Patrick?
Approximately, yeah.
Approximately a hundred and five kids from Foster who live, who live within one to two miles that are currently taking the bus right now just because of the construction. And when we go back to school in September, that service will no longer be available, but maybe twenty of those kids want to take a bus and pay a fee for it, okay? In South, there may be some kids who live on Main, along Main Street that may think that, okay, I'm within the one or two mile radius, but I will be willing to pay a fee because it's on a main street. So we set up, maybe about ten of those families would want to be included. And for middle school and high school, Porrick, it's on his knowledge of, of, for, for high school, it's really ninth, ninth and,
Ten.
Ninth, ninth and tenth grade. The eleventh and twelfth graders will have them, will charge them the, the parking fee. So it wouldn't be that we're forcing people to now move to, from the buses to driving. Hopefully because there'll be an increase in the parking fee as well. Maybe we should increase it anymore, maybe you tell me what you think on that one. Maybe charge the parking fee equivalent to the bus fee so that if there's any revenue loss from the bus fee, we could, could get on the parking. I don't know, you tell me what you think on that one. But this analysis here tells us that we'll probably get about two hundred and seventy thousand from this. And in terms of that, there will be some costs associated with it. There will be some administrative costs for implementation, getting policies in place. And in terms of getting the, the cards so you can swipe in when you get on the bus. And so I think net on net, we'll probably get to about two fifty in terms of the contribution to the, the budget. In, in our minds, when we saw that two fifty, we figured that we could at least save two positions with that if we implemented the two fifty for the, the transportation fee.
I just, when you're calculating these costs, maybe we could talk with the Hingham Police on this, just in terms of, cause if there's going to be more, more people are driving their kids to school, whether it's more crossing guards and if it's going to be an added cost to that, I'm just thinking if there, if people don't want to pay this fee, we could see more cars driving to the high school. I could, I'm just, I'm just remembering during COVID when we were driving our kids to the high school and comparing it to what it is now and it was a lot more congested than the average day of driving someone to the high school now. And I think we had more crossing guards back then, during that time because there was heavier congestion on the roads.
I mean, it, it.
I mean, Rosie's fantastic, don't get me wrong. But there was just so many more people coming in from different directions, it was, it was hard.
I mean, what I can do too as well, I don't know if Hingham is like other towns in our neighbors, neighbor, just to see where, because where would so many people charge a fee? Like, I can ask business managers around whether they saw such an increase, high increase in traffic.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, yeah, it would be great to hear what they have to say. I'm, I'm just guessing and I actually think it would only be the high school that you may see an increase. I don't think really at the elementary school.
Well, elementary's not really charging anyways.
No.
Elementary's free.
More or less free here.
I'm just, yeah, well, sorry, I'm not, we're not walkers, I'm like, that's what I'm thinking.
But I would imagine like my house would now be a walker for PRS, for example.
Yeah.
I would pay it, absolutely.
Can I just ask a question before we start debating, because I want to just be clear? So this projected revenue that you have is not already included in the offsets that you have? So this would be new additional money, okay? Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, Tim?
Just because, you know, I love to complicate fees.
Yeah.
Just a couple of ideas to think about. One, the late bus. I wouldn't want especially middle school kids to lose the opportunity to participate in clubs and things because they didn't have a bus fee. It's something that, I don't have a solution for that, but it's something to think about.
Maybe, maybe the solution is we give them a card for the bus, if we stick on it, if they pay the activity fee.
Okay. Ooh, I like that. That's good. And just another idea, just because I think there may be, I'm, I'm trying to encourage people to take the bus because it's environmentally better. It's probably better for family stress, all of that. So I think the, the bus is the gold standard of what people want, we want, would want people to use. Could, would, would it be possible to, instead of a three hundred and sixty-dollar fee, to have two one hundred and eighty-dollar fees, a morning fee and an afternoon fee? Because I think a lot of people may, with parents' work schedules, say, oh, I can drive my kids to school every day, but I need them to get a ride home or something like that. Just, just an idea, I don't know if that would.
Sure we can't charge to drop your child off. The bus will be free, but you'll have to pay to drive.
Right, you know, looking at, I mean, some families have very loose mornings and complicated afternoons, some families have the opposite. I don't know if those would make it, cut down on congestion.
Exactly, like the bus pricing, EZ passes.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't.
I don't want to live in a world where everywhere we don't use the buses and everybody's, and you have the car line that goes three miles down the road and makes every morning a nightmare for schools while they're getting.
I think it's a reasonable, I mean, I think obviously this is good to get more money. I think it is, I want to, can I ask about these assumptions? Cause I'm, I'm not sure I'm following, like for high school, three seventy-eight or three seventy-eight, sorry, current ridership, three seventy-eight.
So, so, so what Porrick and I?
That every ninth grader and tenth grader continues to take the bus?
So, so, so what Porrick and I did, and Porrick, we can speak to that better than I did.
The three, the three seventy-eight is what are assigned to a bus right now. Do they all take it? Most of them do.
Right.
That's where that's coming.
I think you're going to have a significant, so I'll just say myself, I will have a ninth and tenth grader, I would probably drive and not pay the six hundred dollars.
You will drive them?
Probably.
You would?
They don't, they don't take the bus home. Cause they have sports most days. I mean, progressing next year, and I, my neighborhood, there's forty people or a hundred houses, like I think you'll have a lot of. I, I do, I certainly don't think it's a hundred percent. I don't know if it's fifty.
I have the opposite, I have an eleventh grader who drives his ninth grade sister, but there are days when he goes, there's actually many days when he goes in early and she takes the bus. And it's just like some, there's no rhyme or reason to it and I would pay the fee so she could take the bus. Those few, once, once a week, I would pay the fee for that.
And I've heard there are parents who drop their kids off, ninth, tenth graders, because they're under the two-mile radius or whatever it is for buses and they said they would pay a fee to have the kids picked up.
Yes. There are quite a few families that have called and said, we'll pay for it, they want the bus.
That I can.
It also depends on where you live, like I live pretty far. It also depends on where you live, like I live pretty far away from high school and it's like, it's not on the way for me.
Right.
Whereas, who am I putting the other end of this town and it is on the way for them.
Yeah, I'm, that's what I'm worried about, I feel like the middle school is where you get potentially most decrease in ridership because
I agree.
the bus is so early, on the way to Route Three for a lot of people. I think a lot of people drop their kids off anyway, not all, like, my kids were probably took the bus half the time, I had to drop them off half the time. Would I have? I'm a sucker, I probably would have been like, I'll pay the fee, but I could see a lot more people being like, oh, if I'm already driving them half the time, I'll just drive them all the time.
The traffic is a lot more, is a lot different now because NDA starts around the same.
Oh, it was horrible. Oh, it, it was horrible then too. I'm not that old, it was, it was horrible then too.
I say you are.
It was horrible then too.
It's awful, I would, I would.
I mean, do you do a survey?
Kids miss the bus, I'm like, you, you can't miss the bus.
You gotta live in Farm Hills and you're going against the traffic.
Yeah, I know. I, I had a way, I went right there.
Patrick, I was wondering if you could explain for the middle school specifically, we have to bus sixth graders who are beyond
Oh, yes.
the two miles, so we're running the bus anyway.
Yeah.
So I think whatever we're charging for the fee would be a bonus in that we're running those buses anyway for the sixth graders
True.
that are more than two miles.
Yep.
That makes sense.
The buses are going to run regardless.
They're going to run regardless.
Right.
This would be a bonus.
I mean, if you're gonna try and get accurate numbers, I think you're gonna have to do a survey. If you introduce fees, who would take the bus?
Yeah, I, I just, I, if I'm, maybe I'm not understanding, I do not think it will be a hundred percent and ninety-five percent. I, it might be eighty percent, I mean, so it's still two hundred thousand dollars, I think it could be less than that.
And, and we've scaled it down as well at the end.
Okay.
And I know that this is kind of not very visible.
Oh, the eighty percent as well.
Scaled it down as well at the bottom.
Got it, got it.
So I kind of like
Perfect.
I'm not, yeah, assuming that a hundred percent in terms of that, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that makes sense.
Is it a go? Okay.
Can it, can it be a go for a year? Like we're voting on it right now? Because I think there's a lot of unknowns about how it's gonna affect things, I think.
Definitely.
It might be worth having a conversation with traffic committee, I think it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've, we've been talking about this for many years and we've been trying to not do it. We try holding off as long as we possibly can.
Right.
I mean, does, I, I don't think, I mean, I don't like the idea of an added fee, however, the benefit, if we're gonna save a couple of positions.
Exactly, yes, yeah.
And to me, it's worth it.
I don't love it either, but if it saves.
Yeah.
I guess I would put waiting a week, I mean, I might choose the athletic fee above the transportation fee. Like, again, we're talking half a million dollars, so.
That's the only thing I was thinking too, is there another
I don't know why we would vote for this.
technology fee.
Maybe we should do both, but uh, I guess, I'm not sure, transport, I think, I know we might have problems on the athletic side, losing kids playing sports, which I'm, you know, I'm very pro-sports, just uh, anyone who knows me. I think this might introduce more complications than, that we've all talked about, I mean, we've all talked, you know, for, for the years. I'm, I think there could be a lot of congestion. More than we think.
Porrick and I also mentioned that some parents may say, I'm paying that fee, you're taking that bus.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
The sum might increase.
You better not miss that bus now because I'm paying for it.
Also, after three or four weeks of trying to navigate the congestion, people might make different choices and actually
Yes, true.
choose to pay the bus fee rather than.
And then have the late fee as well too.
Would, would we allow that? I know in some towns that if you don't pay by
Yep.
by August thirty-first, then you don't, you can't ride the bus that year. I think there's a couple of towns that.
There, there are towns that say so and a lot of them, the, the one thing that we have in terms of flexibility is that we have our own buses where they are contracted with food students or something, I think it may be what um.
Yeah, I, I would, I would be hopeful that we would have that flexibility because, you know.
At least the first few years, I think, while you're implementing it. Especially the first couple of years while you're implementing it, right? Because then people get like.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, let's not be crazy, we're not offering them prorated rates for signing up.
No, exactly, you sign up late, you still pay the late fee, yes.
All right. And then in terms of this year, um, we're just, I, this hasn't been updated, we're actually just asking for a wheelchair van. A wheelchair van this year, um, as part of capital. And um, I think that's it.
Do we not have one already?
We do, but it's um, in terms of the mileage and the age of it, the wheelchair van is.
It's ten years old this year.
So be a replacement.
Yeah, so that's why we're asking for a replacement.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, and then in terms of a summary, um, initially we had spoken about, this is just a breakdown of as of now, our reductions right now, right? And in terms of, um, we were able to, in terms of um, some of the, the um, I, so kind of like the question that Mrs. Carenti asked about the um, the laptops versus Chromebooks. Initially, I kind of had them, part of, some of the, the costs for the laptops as part of the operating budgets, thinking that they were Chromebooks. So we were able to move some of that back to capital and we got a little bit of a saving in terms of that. And then um, looking at the grade five enrollment for Foster, there's also an enrollment where they um, where the kids in that, they're actually three, um, sorry, the, the fourth grade are three classes right now. So when they move up to, to fifth grade, then we, we don't need, we don't need to have four classes, so we can save one position in terms of that particular class.
Are they bumping up against the numbers though? Because I suspect with Foster opening, we might see some more kids coming.
So in terms of our enrollment rolled forward, we kind of, um, when we maybe did a rol, a rollover of the enrollment, we kind of did a bump for kindergarten. And even with that bump, they should be fine. Because we kind of like estimated that there would be some kids that would choose to come to Foster, or maybe some, maybe some families may come back.
Yeah.
Some of first grades, we'll see on that one here. And then we have our transportation fee and our parking fee and athletics, so we think that we have about a possible four hundred and sixty-three thousand um, to reduce our, our um, deficit by. And we're hoping that with the retirements that you suggested, or you, you've signed off on and approved on Monday, hopefully we'll have a few people put their hands up for others and agree to um, um, take a bow. And the same thing in terms of leaves, where we have, we'll be looking at any leave of absences that have been extended to see if that will help for this year as well. So we're still hopeful in terms of where things may land. Um, the next meeting is on the twenty-seventh and then we'll, we, we will have more information by then. Uh, it'll be, what, four days from the deadline for the retirements? So hopefully people would have responded by that time and we will, we'll give a, a good update in terms of the budget by then.
Any questions?
And then just in terms of, our next meeting is on January twenty-seventh.
Does anybody in the public have any questions? Not seeing any, okay, all right, thank you.
Is anybody in the public still?
Uh, it's dropped off, but there's twelve, well, it's including some of us.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what's next?
So I guess my only question is, would we want to vote on any of those fees at this time? Or um, do we want to keep it until we vote on the budget and we'll incorporate those um, fee increases as part of the budget? Um, can I have an idea as to, in terms of things like the transportation fee? Is that something I should begin to look at rolling into our revolving? Just some guidance so that in terms of our next meeting, I can know exactly which direction we're going in to.
Matt, it kind of sounded like maybe there was, um, might be worthwhile to wait and hear more on athletic fees before we.
Um.
I mean, I don't know, I may, I'm probably on an island.
No, you're not.
Yeah, if I had to vote on athletic fees tonight, I'd vote against it.
I mean, I think I would vote for that five-dollar increase for the whatever, you know, from fifty to seven, fifty-five, yeah, the rentals, like, that's like a clean vote.
Yeah, yep.
That's an easy one, but
Yep.
To me, like, all the big line item ones, like, we should look at them together.
Yeah, I'm struggling with that. I'm struggling with the transportation one. I, I, I'm just gonna throw it out there because my, my thing is, like, what about a district-wide technology fee? Of a hundred dollars per student, less pre-K and kindergarten, since they're already paying. And then, I mean, that's thirty-two hundred students. Three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It seems a bit more equitable, it's, you don't have the complication of what potentially the transportation in high school with the, um, bring your own device.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
But that, but bring your own device, but that, that requires, there can be support that's required there, right? I mean, so.
Yeah, I like to hear from, um, at least on the, on all the fees, just have the public, the community have the opportunity to reach out to us if they have any concerns or want to voice their opinions on it before we vote on it, that's just my view.
The other thing that we didn't do this time is that we have an athletic fee, but we have no um, fee for the arts. Um, is that something that we look at as well in terms of equity as well? Um, similar to the, yeah, but we have a director of athletics, a director of the arts. Maybe we'll be introducing a, a, a fee for the arts.
The arts is something that's required for education purposes, correct? Versus athletics is.
I'm saying in the high, at, at the high school, we could look at it as well, it's, it's, yeah.
Remember when we were talking about the o, override budget?
Mm-hmm.
I think there was a, do we have a music fee?
Yeah, we, we were gonna start charging for like, to do orchestra, I think, or something like that.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for that, I'm just trying to remember back what other kind of fees we were talking about if, if the override didn't pass.
Yep.
So I think the difference between the athletic director and the fine arts director is that the fine arts director is um, part of the academics. Like, part of the schedule during the school day versus the athletics is the after-school and it's extracurricular.
A lot of our, our arts are after-schooling. In terms of, I mean, after school you have the band happening, orchestra happening after school, just similar to athletics.
You mean the small uncles, not the, not the core.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
It feels like that falls under the activity fee, but you're already paying.
We can't hear, you know, I don't.
Is it falling under the activity fee, was it what she was asking?
Okay.
I would be okay voting on the maintenance rentals fee tonight and transportation, the easy ones. But I think we do, we have some questions on the other ones, so.
I'm not sure transportation is an easy one.
No, no, not that one, the, the bus.
Other rentals, possible renting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. And I would, I would support, I mean, the parking fee, I would vote on tonight.
Knock off the easy ones, yeah, I'd be okay with the parking fee too.
I mean, the parking fee, the question is, is it high enough though?
Could we go higher, right?
Because I feel that's a luxury item.
Is it, what is it now? It's one?
Twenty and eighty, yeah.
I, I just want to point out that not, it doesn't accommodate all the kid, not all the kids can park who want to park. It's still limited and I feel like that's, that's part of the picture we're talking about.
It's a luxury, a luxury for those who can. Maybe more people take the bus now.
Yeah, I, I would wait on the, that parking, to me, it's all, you gotta kind of look at it all together. I, to me, the easy one is the five-dollar or whatever it is, increase on the rentals.
Yeah.
The, the rentals may increase your basketball fee too.
I'm off.
Charge them to drop. Yeah. Is the fee to park the same as it is to take the bus? Sorry, I was like back to my, sort of my little, do you charge people to pay drop? Do you charge to drop off, which obviously we can't do, but is paying, is parking the same cost as taking the bus?
That depends.
True.
You're paying your gas and insurance and car payment.
Yeah, or the kids who, or if your sophomore have your license.
But it, but it just goes to the.
Take the bus.
Yes.
You have to drive to school after school to park.
Yes, it goes to the, we're not ready to vote on that tonight because I think we have to take all these things into, yeah, they're all kind of tied together.
All right, so you guys want to vote on the increases for the transportation fee and the
Maintenance.
Transportation rent.
Rental fee, yeah.
Yeah, so just the.
Which I'm sure is the most helpful to you.
Yeah, I know, exactly. Old decision makers tonight, we would like to, we would like to elect the easy votes tonight, Madam Chair, if you don't mind.
Knock off the easy ones.
Low hanging fruit when you.
Exactly.
I'm in the wrong folder, that's why I can't find it. Hold on. So this, so bus rental rate increase, that's the one.
Let me just go, I, I can get it for you. Yep, sorry.
All right, all righty, ready?
Yeah, this one, love this one.
You don't want to debate, you don't want to debate this?
Okay, and this is for FY twenty-six. Ready?
Ready.
Ready.
Matt, you want to make a motion? I will make a motion to approve the transportation rate increase for transportation for FY twenty-six from fifty-two fifty to fifty-five. A little second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can, yeah, we can see.
I'm not sharing anything.
That was just for, that was just for me.
Oh, yes.
I got off when I.
No, I, I can still see it.
Okay, okay.
I'm looking at like a.
Sorry, sorry.
It happens when we start talking. Thank you.
Everything worked out okay? Did everything work out?
I was trying to look at what we did for.
The second one.
The second one?
Seventy, sixty-five to seventy and then.
I thought it was done.
We just went through labor.
Can we just approve it as presented?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, okay. So then the second one is the billing. So you're not done yet.
It's like you're having twins. You gotta wait. I had all the tabs open for all the other stuff. I only make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six salary rate increase.
No.
No?
Facilities.
Facilities, the facilities salary rate, okay.
No.
Alright, facilities, take two, take two. I only make a motion to approve the rental increase fees.
Of three percent.
Of what?
Of three percent.
Of three percent, yeah.
Okay, I'll be sure to write the vote for you next time.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, all right, you have your two votes.
Okay, thank you.
And be careful that we're gonna take a vote to empower the executive director of business operations to make motions.
She had them all written out on the other one for me. We didn't do those.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on to item eight.
Don't turn off those computers.
To approve grants and donations and act as appropriate.
Okay, um, grants and donations, um, I didn't drop a memo, I'm sorry, Jen, um, for this one here. But in, in the package, there is the, the, the grant receipt from the EPA for ten buses, um, for two million dollars. And let me just stop sharing for a second because I can go into the folder. Um, it's for two million dollars from the EPA, just, you just need to vote.
Two million?
To accept that grant fee.
But doesn't cover, but doesn't cover all the buses.
Give me to throw those little machines.
It's just like free money that we can take.
No, I feel, well, I feel like this is.
Little card readers. Give them to throw that in, it's two billion.
I want to know what we're getting so much money, but how much is the actual cost of the buses? Because I, this one, if I recall, this one doesn't include the infrastructure at all.
It, um, so, so, so let me just tell you that um, um, in terms of those buses, assuming the same, because remember, the, the total cost of the um, the buses and the infrastructure this year is approximately twenty-seven thousand per bus. Right, per year, for three percent, um, so it's exactly the same, um, we're looking at the same, the same process as we are right now, it's just on a, on a wider scale. now, it's just on a wider scale. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So it still doesn't include any of the infrastructure though?
This doesn't include, but it, in terms of the savings that we're getting behind the net, I have a, one of the things I've asked for, from Highland is to give us a list of what that's, what the net is, but the initial cost a day to me would be, is 880,000 approximately, that we would have to, to pay, and that would be over seven years.
For 10 more buses.
For the 10 more buses.
That was included in the presentation earlier.
So about 830,000.
That was just for the three.
Yeah.
I'm talking about 10, we're talking 10 more buses.
10 more.
This is, we're talking half the fleet that we have is gonna be EV buses.
Yep.
Which I think is a big, bigger conversation. I mean, we have to talk about, with transportation, can all, can, are we gonna have enough buses that can go extra distance? Because I remember asking the question when we went on that tour. Do we have buses in the winter that would need to be charged during the day that can't go the amount of miles that you typically get on an EV bus?
Well, so in terms of all the bus, the EV buses, we will get enough miles to do all our runs. In terms of our local runs.
That's, that, to my recollection, that is not what.
For our local runs in terms of.
When we asked in the wintertime.
Yeah.
How many mile, when we, they told us how many miles we would get in the wintertime with those batteries, and when we asked Patrick, how many miles we go, it, it was very close.
Right, but in terms of, in terms of our local.
And with the winter, we don't know. How long these batteries are gonna last.
Well, for the, the local runs, we can do the local runs. Where we can't, what we can't do.
No, I specifically asked him.
Okay.
How many miles we go on our local runs in the morning.
Right.
And it was very close to what we would get. And it, and at the time, we were only talking three buses. So to me that, okay, it's only three buses, but now we're talking about, we're going up to 13.
Right. And, and we can go back to Patrick on that one for sure. Yeah.
Okay.
So you don't want to, to accept the grant?
I don't really understand what we're, I'm getting confused.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I feel like this is a bigger conversation, like going from 13. I'm reading EV buses to 13.
So with the EV buses in the wintertime, especially the mileage decrease.
No, I'm tracking that. I'm not, I don't understand why, which I'm sure you're right, why this grant is forcing us to go from three to 13 by accepting this grant.
Because we're accepting a grant for 10 buses.
We're accepting a grant for 10 buses. Okay, yeah, that seems like a big decision.
Yeah, and I know we have other buses.
And is this like time constrained? Like we need to make a decision?
It is.
We have to accept it first.
Today?
It is. Well, we can wait, I mean, we can wait, but even that is risky, considering the reason.
What, three districts?
Like they mailed it to us seven days ago and we have.
Right, yes, but then remember the climate that we're in right now.
We're, we're also, there's nothing in this grant that says we're getting rid of the fuel bus, the gas buses that we have right now.
Well, you do. When you get the EV bus, you have to decommission one of the.
Well, the way we, the way we worked it in terms of the three buses, we're not decommissioning our own buses. The, the Highland is gonna decommission their own buses, so we don't have to give it up. You're right, Tim, yeah.
Okay, so we will still have fuel buses for, if we run into problems, we will have buses we can put gas in.
Exactly.
And drive.
But not, but we use 20, they use all the buses for all the routes and they go a certain distance. So you could potentially be cutting it close on the mileage in the wintertime.
Right now, we have 20 buses, right?
Yes, 22.
20 gas buses.
Yeah, 22 diesel buses, yeah.
And they all run.
We're adding 13 buses onto that.
Yes.
No, but you're taking, no, but no, 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 no. You're taking away.
You don't have to.
Right.
Ayesha's saying we don't have to take the buses away, at least certainly in year one when we're figuring it out.
Right.
Then aren't we paying more?
But then we're paying a lot more because we have to, we have to rent.
Insurance.
We have to continue our leasing agreement with those additional buses. I mean, I don't, I don't see it's feasible for us to pay for these buses.
Okay.
I mean, I usually correct when we're wrong, plus an additional and to keep the current fleet that we currently have at the lease.
So right now, the three, we actually own three buses, so that's a different conversation.
Okay.
The three, because we, we own three buses now that we don't have to replace.
Mm-hmm.
We can keep those. With the 10, and I, I, I think my, we probably have to go back to Patrick on that, unfortunately he left, but in terms of the charging, even with the bus, the van that we have right now, the charging is less in the wintertime, but it's still, we still, because of most of our runs, our local runs, we're still able to use a bus to drop off to Cardinal Cushion and back and everything else, right? So I, and I think that it was reduction, but I, we can confirm with Patrick in terms of that. The only concern even the EPA, everybody has with this is that come January 20th, depending on how things change in, in Washington, those funds may not be available to us. So are we willing to say that we're gonna give back $2 million? That's the question to consider.
$2 million is gonna potentially.
What's the total cost?
What's the, we don't know what the total cost is. We don't know how much.
Well, it's 27,000 per bus that, that we would have to pay.
So that, is that the $1,023,706 recipient contribution?
It's a total project period cost for 1.172, that that's your.
And is that cost.
Yeah, well, there's on page two, there's a recipient contribution of $1,023,706.
It would be for 2027's budget, not, not for 2026's budget.
So.
But we would need to.
Foreshadowing to 2027, is this, is this something that could potentially cause more cuts to our budget? Because we're increasing.
Well, come, come, come 2027, we will have to get new leases anyhow. And in some cases, and for this here, for 10 new buses, and I would have to do the math and just make sure on that before I misspeak, but then for the annual service fee for, for year one would be 27,000 for, for the bus, right? And for a new, a new diesel bus at this point in time, this is a bus, plus the infrastructure for the bus as well, right? For a new diesel bus, right now, the cost is about 20-something thousand dollars for lease on a new diesel bus. So it's not significantly different between the diesel and electric because of the grants.
So if we were to accept this tonight and then change our minds later, can we give it back?
We, we could structure it that way.
Because I guess, I understand the time crunch with that. I, I'd like to hear more from Patrick, I'm sorry, he's left, and potentially even Highland. Is that an option? Like, or are we committing ourselves to purchasing 10 additional buses?
I believe we are.
Well, I think by accepting the grant, in terms of what I, what we've told them that we would like to do is to pilot the three, so to give us some time to be able to pilot it.
Right.
So the way we're structuring it is that we would go ahead with, because there's a lag between placing an order and actually getting the buses, that's one.
Right.
And then secondly, they also want to make sure that the infrastructure is in place before they actually give you a bus. So there'll be a time lag between those things happening. And because of that time lag, that we'll, we can use that time, we can place an order and, but, but we're working with Highland right now to see if, given the timeframe that we need, if we had to rescind on the buses because we didn't like the three, could we rescind on the 10 as well? And we're working on that language with them as well. So one of the things that we're working on from my last meeting with Highland was to have a discussion with, because we're not the only place that wants to get buses, right? So if it is that they're placing the order on our behalf and we decide we don't want it, could they as the supplier and, and working with the manufacturer, then find another supply, another buyer if we decided we're gonna rescind on it or not? So we're trying to figure out that logistic.
I think we need that information before we can.
Right.
Admit to take, to accept the grant.
So I guess I'm just saying to you that by saying that, I would prefer that you would accept it with stipulations in terms of certain things and not accept it at all because it means that come January 20th and a week after that or whatever, we may not have any of those funds available.
Yeah, right, that makes sense.
Right, and then I'm, I'm saying that.
But I just.
I understand that you have questions and everything, and I agree that you should. I have questions too that we're trying to look into, but my fear is that there are other places in, in the world that are using electric buses that work and work very well for them. We haven't tried it ourselves yet, so we want to try it at the pilot.
Right.
Could we be given back $2 million by, by not even making the first step? Right?
But I will say, I'll say one more thing and then I'll shut up, that by accepting $2 million, it could potentially make us have to spend more money in FY 27 and FY 26. The cost could be more, which could cause us to have to make more, further reductions in our budget. And that, those are the types of numbers that I, I personally can't, as much as I don't, don't want to turn away $2 million, I don't want to accept something that's gonna have a much bigger cost for us in two years from now. I just, I'm.
Yeah.
It makes me nervous.
Yeah, I've been wondering if there's a way to accept it, you said with stipulate, stipulate, yeah, conditionally, you know, we accept it, assuming that.
I don't think, I wouldn't say anything else. I, I remember reading about this grant when we, when we first started talking about it over the summer, and it was my understanding that you took, if you accepted this grant, you had to take the grant.
If we accept the grant stipulated on the condition that you get more information.
Yeah.
From Patrick and it meets the satisfaction of the committee, something like that, could we, could we do that? That way we, we can wiggle out of it if we need to, if the information comes back that, because I agree, there, there are too many questions to just blindly accept it right now, but is there a way to accept it so that we can get more information, but we're kind of locking it in?
I think it would have to be, if that was the case, I think it would have to be, we'd accept it conditioned upon being not having to accept it if we don't like the information that comes.
Yes, yes.
Like, can we, it does seem weird to me, because these are competitive grants, right? It does seem strange to me that you could say, maybe we'll take $2 million? Like, we're not entirely sure that we will, but I don't know. I mean, if, can we worked into the language with them that we wanted, then I'd be supportive of it, but.
Our next school committee's meeting is the 27th. Is that enough time? Is that too late? I know it's after the 20th, but.
Right. I, you see, the fear that everybody has right now is that we don't even know the EPA is gonna exist by the 27th.
Right.
But if, but if the EPA doesn't exist on the 27th, we're not gonna have the $2 million.
Well, we can, we can.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand the deadline.
We accepted the grant that they already committed to.
Yeah.
But if the EPA goes away, like who cares? Like, all the grants are gone. I just, I'm just, I'm not, I understand.
They have a legal obligation to give it to us if we accepted it.
Yeah, as if Alfred would have accepted it.
But we're accepting it on contingencies.
Right.
But I think we're, I think the contingencies aren't with the EPA, their contingencies are with school committee and Patrick and internal.
No, both.
Oh, are there? Okay.
Because our contingency is, we want the EPA to agree that if we accept, we're accept, if we accept this grant tonight, we want the EPA to acknowledge that we might decide we don't want it.
Right.
I mean, the EPA is not gonna agree to that, right?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is the only deadline, sorry, just, is the deadline that. Like, let's pretend there wasn't going to be a regime change, whatever you want to call it. What is, is there a separate deadline on this? Like, or we have.
No, I mean, we could.
We have four months to sort of consider this and then get back to them.
If it would, that, and the risk is high in terms of that, because, because it's not a, a case where January 20th does not exist, right? But the point being that if it isn't, it wasn't a January 20th change, we could have three years to make this decision.
Yeah, okay, so the deadline is.
But the fear that most people have communicated right now is that it's, how do we say that? As, because of the changes that are happening right now, nobody knows what's gonna happen.
Not that I want to add an extra meeting to anyone's schedule, but what if, I mean, this is a 19-page document and it was dropped into the folder late this afternoon. I'd like to read it, you know, before we did it. Is there a way, do we want to do like a special meeting next week, even on Zoom? And, and get Patrick there, or?
Which is after January 20th. I'm just trying to get.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
January 20th is Monday.
Yeah, oh, I see, okay.
And it's a holiday.
MLK weekend, they're closed, and they're closed tomorrow, so they'll be closed tomorrow.
That's right, yeah. Sorry, challenged with the calendar. Trying to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm personally willing to take the risk that the EPA doesn't go away and accept this. Like, I, I don't know how big a risk that is, maybe it's 80%, but even with that, I don't know how we can accept this. I don't have a full understanding.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like we're, we need 13 buses next week or we're doomed. Like, we have, that's what I'm thinking, like we have buses. I mean, they're not ideal because they're fossil fuel run buses, but I'm still concerned about, I don't understand what this recipient contribution of 1.2 million is, where's.
So it sounds like the committee's not ready to vote.
Okay, that's fair.
So we'll take it up on the 27th.
That's fair.
And if we can talk to Patrick that night as well, that would be.
Right.
Okay.
He'll be too busy getting rid of the Department of Education to get rid of the EPA.
I was just gonna, I was gonna say. This might be the least worst thing.
I have to say, we've been very funny tonight.
We.
Not a lot of coupon liners. No one's watching.
Do you have any more motions, Ayesha?
Not to take away, this is all very serious, very.
We're moving Jack when it's.
Because it's nine o'clock.
And we have one more item to address, so. Item nine.
You know, the agenda said 8:30. I just want to say.
We're moving over to item nine to approve surplus and act as appropriate. This one should be easy.
That's easy. The consumer department, the family and consumer department has sewing machines that are no longer in use and they just want to decommission.
Sewing machines that are no longer in use to decommission.
I don't know.
You guys ready to? Matt wants to buy them.
Serial numbers.
If we change our minds later, can we un-decommission them?
After the 20th.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right. Does somebody want to make a?
I will make a motion to declare the sewing machines listed above as surplus and authorize the family and consumer science coordinator to dispose of them at the least cost to hang them.